Good evening. And welcome to the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education meeting on November ninth, two thousand and twenty one in the boardroom building five hundred thirteen thirty one East Calaveras Boulevard. I'm Chris Norwood, your two thousand and twenty one vice president, president. Welcome to the meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our educational proceeding proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph and Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid style meetings online either on Zoom or YouTube or in person inside a boardroom. Public comments can be made on agenda items or any items not appearing on the agenda while you are logged onto Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written comments webpage. Instructions on how to submit your in comment, one public comment per person is allowed for each item. Thank you for being here and I will now call this meeting to order. Rogue, Scott roll call, please.
Board President Norwood.
Yes.
Vice President Yip Twan.
Yes.
Clerk Leanne.
Here.
Board Member Si. Board Member Yo.
Here.
Our student board reps will be joining us later for public session. That will be Sidney Huang, MCA Student Rep and Mira Pachta, Cal Hills High School Student Rep. At this time, I'd like to review and approve the closed session agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to review and approve the close session agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. We're, we're together. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Prior closed session, are there any comments from the public?
Uh, yes, we do have a hand raised. Uh, Michael Si. We are gonna enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please take yourself off mute, go right ahead.
Hello?
Go right ahead.
Is my, is it coming through?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Uh, again, this is board member Michael Tai. I am, um, present for the meeting. I'm trying to log in, but I'm not being given a Zoom link. Again, I think this is bizarre. Um. Again, I would, I would like to officially state that I am requesting the Zoom link. If you're not gonna give it to me or for whatever reason, I think that's really unacceptable. Um, and I am present for this meeting. Again, I've looked into this matter. I found out that, um, these sort of antics have happened in politics before where even, um, other legislators were locked out of their own offices by, um, some other politicians who were trying to shut them out of the process. So again, um, I found out that this has happened before in other places and I'm really disappointed that this is the way governance is being conducted in Milpitas. Um, and I'm gonna keep saying that I have the right to have a Zoom link to a meeting. You know, if you're gonna do this to a duly elected official, you know, I hate to think what, um, an average member of the public would be subjected to if they're trying to access a meeting and they might be getting locked out or shut out of it through some whatever, um, dubious means with dubious pretext. Again, the, the solution is simple. Just start giving me the Zoom meeting links again. Um, there really isn't a problem with it. Other school boards are doing, other city councils are doing it. Apparently it's only Milpita School Board where one of the board members thinks, um, he gets to not let me have a Zoom meeting link. So I hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears, but if it does, well, then I'm gonna have to take other actions. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Uh, we have no other hands raised at this time.
We have a comment from, uh, board member Leanne.
Yes, thank you, President Norwood. Um, I just want to address Michael Si, our board member. Is this some kind of game you're playing? Because every two weeks we have a meeting, you would stay home, call in and said that you are demanding a Zoom link to log on to attend the meeting on Zoom. But yes, in fact, you order your dinner. So if you know that you're going to come in here to attend the meeting, why are you staying home and do this kind of stupid game? And number two, AB three sixty one specified, if you want to, to log on from home, from your apartment, notify us seventy two hours in advance so that we can publish this. And you are fine doing that. But no, you have to do this every single meeting. Governor Newsom came up with three sixty one. If you have a problem, I suggest you take it up with him. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, Scott?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
We are adjourned to close session.
Good evening. Welcome to the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education meeting on November 9, 2021, 1331 East Calaveras Boulevard, Building 500, our hybrid meeting. I'm your board president, Chris Norwood. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid style meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments may be made while you're logging to Zoom or if you're in person, YouTube. YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instruction on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comment on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you're called upon. Instructions are listed on the agenda and there are copies available at the back of the table. And if you would like to speak during public comment, you need to fill out one of the requests for speaker card for the Board of Education. One comment, one public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you, Board President Norwood. Yeah, as he was saying, if you are among our virtual audience, you would have to be logged on to Zoom to make a public comment. You will raise your hand by clicking the hand icon by your name to indicate your request. Please wait to be called upon. We will call names in the order they are received. What we'll do is listen for your, well, first listen for your name. We will enable your audio. You will have two minutes to talk. You'll see the timer on the screen and we just ask that you please be patient. The board president will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no responses required from the board or district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item at a future board meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. Lastly, we have special accommodations. If you need any special accommodations prior to a board, if you let us know at least two business days in advance, we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcasted live on Zoom and YouTube. On the Zoom platform, closed captioning is available. You click the closed captioning icon and live transcription will appear on your screen. And lastly, if there are any additional documents, we will have them readily available for members of the public. For tonight's meeting, we do have some additional documents at the table where you could get the agenda and the public card. Other than that, back to you, President Norwood.
Thank you. Thank you. In closed session, we took no action. At this time, I'd like a motion to review and approve the open session agenda.
Move to approve the open session.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Flag salute.
Hello, I am Cadet Tran here with Cadet Elizondo and Penalosa. Please rise for the flag. Hands over your hearts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Milpitas High School, NJROTC for your service. Comments from the public? We will begin with the, oh, let's go with the virtual. Scott, are there any comments? Are there any virtual hands?
Yes, we have a few hands raised this evening, President Norwood. We're going to start at the top. It is JR. We are going to enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Just take yourself off mute and go right ahead.
Thank you for the time, school board members and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. First and foremost, I wanted to speak on the Milpitas Community Theater, having the descendants auditions that will be happening. Oh, it started already on Monday and then tomorrow is the last audition. So I believe the city has sent out the information for the schools. If there's any way to get that out to the parents, that would be amazing. And I would like to yield the rest of my time to Irma Gonzalez and she's representing ABC, the MHS ABC. Thank you so much for your time.
So Scott, are there any other virtual hands?
Yes, next up, we have Kavita Shridhar. We are going to enable your audio, Kavita. You take yourself off mute and you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Kavita and I'm actually representing the Sped Family Advocacy Group, which is a group of parents who have children who are students with disabilities at the Milpitas Unified School District. And we had a few questions, comments that we would like to pose to the board and request some clarification in an upcoming meeting or if the board could provide direction as to where we would get this information. The first thing is the fact that the board had recently approved the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan for students with disabilities. And students with disabilities were tier one priority to be served. However, this has been inaccessible for a lot of students with disabilities purely based on the fact that they're not able to receive individualized support. Longer school days are not conducive to learning and also transportation is an issue for staying up to 4:45 at school for most students with disabilities. We wanted to see if the district can provide any guidance as to how this is being addressed. Further, we also wanted to request if it's possible to get a breakdown of special education funding for our district. It would help us determine the efficacy of resources and programs that are being funded to support students with disabilities if we could get a granular breakdown as to how this funding is being allocated. I, those are the two comments that I wanted to make. I want to save the rest of the time for other members from our group who have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kavita. Moving along the virtual hands raised, we have Raina Shah. Raina, we are going to enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Just take yourself off mute.
Hi, I'm Raina Shah. I'm also a member of the Sped Advocacy Committee, just like Kavita. So the question that I wanted to, or comment I wanted to bring up is the special ed students in our district have consistently been scoring in the standard not med zone for the CASP, the California Standardized Test. And this is just merely one example of disparity of student progress in our district. That having been said, we would like to request a concrete plan on how the district is planning to bridge the achievement gap and additionally, how they will assess whether the proposed plans and our methods are working with concrete data. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. Next up, we have Jessica Lee. Jessica, we've enabled your audio. Take yourself off mute. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I am also a member of the Sped Family Advocacy Group. I want to share with the board the most unserved population of students with disability. The largest group of unserved students are those who have disability and sitting in the general classrooms. The student may appear to be posing average ability due to their fact that their ability and disability mask each other. They typically perform a great level, but unfortunately are also performing well below their potential. There we, there who we are called twice exceptional students. This student are falling through the crack of the system. Two E student are often overlooked and misunderstood. The research and study have shown that two E student have a higher rate of depression than their average peer due to their asynchronous development uneven performance and not getting proper support at younger age. Not only their gifts are not being recognized, their disability and challenge are not being addressed. We would like to know how many student in our district are identified as twice exceptional students? And are there any experienced professional in our district who can help provide support to identify, assess, and do the interpretation for the assessment result as well as guidance for support and services to address their needs? And what type of support services the district have in place for this population? Thank you.
Instructions are listed on the agenda. And there are copies available at the back of the table. And if you would like to speak during public comment, you need to fill out one of the requests for speaker card for the Board of Education. One comment, one public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you, Board President Norwood. Yeah, as, as he was saying, if you are among our virtual audience, you would have to be logged on to Zoom to make a public comment. You will raise your hand by clicking the hand icon by your name to indicate your request. Please wait to be called upon. We will call names in the order they are received. What we'll do is listen for your, well, first listen for your name. We will enable your audio. You will have two minutes to talk. You'll see the timer on the screen. And we just asked that you please be patient. The Board President will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the Board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no responses required from the Board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the Board may instruct the Superintendent to agendize the item at a future board meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the Board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the Board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. Lastly, we have special accommodations. If you need any special accommodations prior to a board, if you let us know at least two business days in advance, we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcasted live on Zoom and YouTube. On the Zoom platform, closed captioning is available. You click the closed captioning icon and live transcription will appear on your screen. And lastly, if there are any additional documents, we will have them readily available for members of the public. For tonight's meeting, we do have some additional documents at the table where you could get the agenda and the public card. Other than that, back to you, President Norwood.
Thank you. Thank you. In closed session, we took no action. At this time, I'd like a motion to review and approve the open session agenda.
Move to approve the open session.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Flag salute.
Hello, I am Cadet Tran here with Cadet Elizondo and Penalosa. Please rise for the flag. Hands over your hearts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Milpitas High School NJROTC for your service. Comments from the public? We will begin with the, oh, let's go with the virtual. Scott, are there any comments? Are there any virtual hands?
Yes, we have a few hands raised this evening, President Norwood. We're going to start at the top. It is JR. We are going to enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Just take yourself off mute and go right ahead.
Thank you for the time, School Board members and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. First and foremost, I wanted to speak on the Milpitas Community Theater, having the descendants auditions that will be happening. Oh, it started already on Monday. And then tomorrow is the last audition. So I believe the city has sent out the information for the schools. If there's any way to get that out to the parents, that would be amazing. And I would like to yield the rest, the rest of my time to Irma Gonzalez. And she's representing ABC, the MHS ABC. Thank you so much for your time.
So Scott, are there any other virtual hands?
Yes, next up, we have Kavita Shridhar. We are going to enable your audio, Kavita. You take yourself off mute and you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Kavita and I'm actually representing the Sped Family Advocacy Group, which is a group of parents who have children who are students with disabilities at the Milpitas Unified School District. And we had a few questions, comments that we would like to pose to the Board and request some clarification in an upcoming meeting or if the Board could provide direction as to where we would get this information. The first thing is the fact that the Board had recently approved the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan for students with disabilities. And students with disabilities were tier one priority to be served. However, this has been inaccessible for a lot of students with disabilities, purely based on the fact that they're not able to receive individualized support. Longer school days are not conducive to learning. And also, transportation is an issue for staying up to 4:45 at school for most students with disabilities. We wanted to see if the district can provide any guidance as to how this is being addressed. Further, we also wanted to request if it's possible to get a breakdown of special education funding for our district. It would help us determine the efficacy of resources and programs that are being funded to support students with disabilities. If we could get a granular breakdown as to how this funding is being allocated. I, those are the two comments that I wanted to make. I want to save the rest of the time for other members from our group who have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kavita. Moving along the virtual hands raised, we have Raina Shah. Raina, we are going to enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Just take yourself off mute.
Hi, I'm Raina Shah. I'm also a member of the Sped Advocacy Committee, just like Kavita. So the question that I wanted to, or comment I wanted to bring up is the special ed students in our district have consistently been scoring in the standard not met zone for the CASP, the California Standardized Test. And this is just merely one example of disparity of student progress in our district. That having been said, we would like to request a concrete plan on how the district is planning to bridge the achievement gap. And additionally, how they will assess whether the proposed plans and/or methods are working with concrete data. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. Next up, we have Jessica Lee. Jessica, we've enabled your audio. Take yourself off mute. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I am also a member of the Sped Family Advocacy Group. I want to share with the Board the most unserved population of students with disability. The largest group of unserved students are those who have disability and sitting in the general classrooms. The student may appear to be posing average ability due to their fact that their ability and disability mask each other. They typically perform a grade level, but unfortunately are also performing well below their potential. There we, there who we are called twice exceptional students. These students are falling through the crack of the system. Two E students are often overlooked and misunderstood. The research and study have shown that two students have a higher rate of depression than their average peer due to their asynchronous development uneven performance and not getting proper support at younger age. Not only their gifts are not being recognized, their disability and challenge are not being addressed. We would like to know how many students in our district are identified as twice exceptional students? And are there any experienced professional in our district who can help provide support to identify, assess, and do the interpretation for the assessment result, as well as guidance for support and services to address their needs? And what type of support services the district have in place for this population? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica and President Norwood. That's our last virtual hand raised at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Irma Gonzalez. You speaking as a group?
Yes, we have a group of here and one is on Zoom.
Okay.
So we'd like to, two of us will present.
So as a group, that's five minutes, right? Scott, you're going to put the five minutes up on the screen?
Good evening, Board members. My name is Irma Gonzalez and I'm the current treasurer of the Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club. In short, we're a club, an organization that fundraises to support our athletes, our sports teams, and provide scholarships to our athletes. I'm here today to share with you some of the accomplishments of the ABC Board since the lifting of the cease and desist order last June. Number one, the ABC Board has certified the election results for the Vice President and Secretary positions. Two, the ABC Board filled the membership Trojan wear and volunteer chair positions. Three, we have granted and issued three ABC scholarships to June 2021 graduates. Four, we have ordered, purchased, and received awards for our athletes. Five, we have started our membership drive at all MHS sports events through our membership listing, Parents Square, and the ABC website. Six, we have purchased and sold Trojan wear at school sports events. Seven, we have renewed our business, our Milpitas Business License, our general liability insurance, and our Costco membership. Eight, through the end of September, we have generated 11,420 in gross sales from Charity Bingo and 8,875 in gross sales from concessions at sports events. ABC President Freddie Santano and I met with Principal Rojas in June and presented to him a timeline in which to complete the bylaws and other critical tasks. Principal Rojas approved the timeline, which finalized the bylaws in January 2022. We made ourselves available and reached out to Principal Rojas numerous times over the summer to work on the bylaws, but he was either unavailable or did not respond. In retrospect, we should have moved forward on our own. Two weeks ago, the ABC and his bylaws was on the agenda, yet nobody informed the ABC Board until a few hours before the board meeting. When this agenda item was discussed, Principal Rojas was not present, nor was Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. At the last board meeting, one board member here asked what would the, what the ramifications were if you voted not to allow the ABC from operating on the Milpitas High School campus? But his question went unanswered. To answer that question, the ABC will not be able to provide concessions, nor be able to sell ABC memberships or Trojan wear. Such fundraising profits will not be available to support MHS athletes and sports teams. And currently, we have requests pending from sports teams. As you can imagine, we were quite surprised when the Board motioned to disallow the ABC from operating on MHS school grounds, when we had been told that the request was going to be to place the ABC on probation. At the last board meeting, Jackie Romero and I strongly requested that this, that this agenda item be postponed. But the Board moved forward with four board members voting in favor of disallowing the ABC to operate on the MHS campus until the bylaws were completed and one board member abstained. This vote was very disheartening to hear, as we knew it would have a negative impact on MHS students. In conclusion, the ABC Board respectfully requests that you withdraw the suspension imposed on us and instead place us on probation until we complete our bylaws. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope to get a formal response at your earliest convenience.
I'm speaking for our Vice President. My name is Dave Crum. I'm also on the Board. As you know, two weeks ago, on October 26th, the Board voted suspend ban for MHS from operating on campus. Still in the spirit of the community collaboration with effort not to disappoint students, parents, visitors, and community members, volunteer parents and community members came together last Friday to operate concessions for the MHS football game. The ABC Board approved use of concessions and equipment. All concessions products were purchased by various volunteers and will be reimbursed by MHS all proceeds going to MHS Athletic Department to support MHS sports athletes. Special thanks to Board Clerk Ms. Hanlin and Mr. Joseph Weinstein for the voluntary services. It was a very fun and successful evening. Net sales concessions were approximately $1,500. As previously mentioned, the number one priority for the ABC Board is to update our current bylaws. At the request of the Board, Mr. Weinstein and former Athletic Director, Mr. Lam, have been assigned to assist the ABC in updating our bylaws. The ABC Board thanks for the assistance. Our goal is to be all-inclusive as we update our bylaws. We plan to get, gather input from the current and past ABC Board members, as well as gather input from community members at large during the month of November and conduct on a vote approving the bylaws next month in December. During the months of November and December this year, there will be approximately 12 boys and girls basketball home games. Each home game generates approximately $400 to $500. Thus, the ABC will lose opportunity of generating approximately $4,500 to $6,000 to support MHS sports programs. There is also a possibility of another home football game if our MHS team keeps winning in the lower division. We have various sports teams and we request financial assistance to support teams in uniforms and equipment. And the ABC Board wishes to support as many teams as possible. It would be extremely unfortunate if the ABC was not present to have concessions available for the attendees of the sports and unable to support the MHS group's teams to the fullest. In conclusion, we respectfully request your withdrawal of suspension imposed on the ABC Board instead of place on probation until we complete our bylaws. We are a professional board and we are very capable of running a financial sound organization. Thank you for your consideration and we expect a formal response to your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Jung.
Thank you, Board President Norwood, MST Trustees, Superintendent Jordan, executive staff, and MST families. My name is Robert Jung and I'm here on behalf of the organization called Hope for the Unhoused. As you may know, our organization is dedicated to reducing homelessness here in Milpitas. One part of our strategy in achieving that particular goal is actually around prevention. We want to thank the Milpitas Unified School District in partnership with us to run our à la carte food program, Willows and Fishes. This program is aimed at MST families, all MST families, who may feel that they are experiencing food insecurity. Three times a week, Wednesday at Spangler, Thursday at Rando, and Friday at Weller, there are food trucks available after school to provide MST families food that they might need for their whole families, not only students, but their whole families. Also with that, we also partner with the county to provide resources for housing and utility assistance, additional food assistance, and other programs to prevent homelessness. We encourage all families in MST who need this help to take advantage of this particular program. And also, if you're interested in what we do, meaning and hope for Unhoused, please join us at the Milpitas Rotary Meeting this coming Monday at noon, and we will present our presentation on what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you leave those doors open?
Your things.
Before we get too far in, I want to just confirm a couple of things with staff. When the Kavita and several others came on and spoke about Sped, they had a couple of things. They had ELO, tier one inaccessible, Sped unable to stay after school, and a request for a breakdown of special ed. They also had inquiry about CASP, student special needs students not being at grade level. And what is the concrete plan to bridge the achievement gap? And then the third thing that I heard was the twice exceptional students and identification and expertise. I'm not quite sure what that particular item was, but they had something about twice exceptional students were. Do you recall what that was and what the action item is from that?
Yes. What Ms. Lee is asking is, do we have staff that is trained in understanding how to recognize students who have what's called twice exceptional abilities? And we have two study sessions coming up with the Board where most, if not all, of these questions will be addressed. One is, at our next board meeting, we have a study session for special ed. And then at our December 14th study session, we have the budget.
Thank you. We'll continue on with the public comment. We have Jeff Lam, Joseph Weinstein. Speaking individually or are you speaking as a group?
Group.
You get more time than
you got to fix that. I mean, two people get five versus one person gets two. So we'll figure that out.
We didn't ask, that's okay. Hi, I'm Jeff Lam and this is Joseph Weinstein. Principal Rojas has requested that the two of us lead a project to deliver a set of bylaws that will meet the approval of the Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club Board that is consistent with the current required practices. And in this letter, we will share with you the plan. And also feel free to send comments to joseph@josephweinstein.com. Participants who participate in this should know clearly that the project is focused solely on creating a set of bylaws to present to the Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club. Discussions about the operations of the club or other athletic clubs are not relevant to the project unless it specifically applies to the section of the bylaws. So our preliminary plan is, one, is to gather all relevant documents that for the MHS ABC, which we've done so far. Gather multiple copies of other Booster Club bylaws, which we have done. Secure a copy of the State of California nonprofit bylaws templates, which we have done. And also secure risk management guidelines for other nonprofits, which we have done that so far also.
And for any of the parents who want to contact me, Principal Rojas has now put out this announcement on Parents Square. There's two Zoom meetings that we are currently planning. The next one is going to be Monday night, November 15th. It is going to be from seven to nine o'clock. The format of these meetings is that every person who wants to speak will be heard for 90 seconds. The topic is limited to what are the practices and things that you believe should be relevant to the new bylaws that we're creating? If time allows, everybody will get a second opportunity. After that, what we will do is we will go in and we'll start actually dealing with sections of bylaws. The second meeting will follow exactly the same format, but at that point in time, we hope to already have addressed exactly what areas of the bylaws that we're going to meet. So far, our team has met personally for about 20, 25 hours with various people who've represented every single side of this. There were old board members, new board members, community members. We met with nonprofit organizations trying to find out what is the best way that we can present a working copy of the bylaws to support our athletes? If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at joseph@josephweinstein.com. That's J O S E P H at josephweinstein, W E I N S T E I N dot com. We'd like to meet with everybody Monday night, but if you can't make it, feel free to contact me and we will meet with you personally. Thank you very much. The other thing that I want to do before I close is on Friday night, we were given the opportunity to run the concession stand for the football game. I want to thank a number of people who stepped up in the community. First of all, without volunteer parents from the Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club, I would have fallen flat on my face in organizing this. So I want to thank Dave Crum, Cheryl Oldham, and Freddie Centrino. I also want to thank Board Member Hanlin for actually stepping up when I happened to call her. She worked the whole time. Former Athletic Director Jeff Lam, and especially Athletic Director Joanna Butcher, Principal Frances Rojas, and all of the students who jumped in to help. Everybody in the community said it was a great night, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon McGowan. There's also Keisha McGowan, so if you want to come up together or individually.
President Norwood, I did actually get a written public comment too from a Courtney McGowan. So I don't know if they're all together.
Okay, we'll come, we'll circle back to that in just a second.
Okay, two minutes?
Or? Yes.
Okay. This homecoming dance that they just had at Milpitas High School. My question is, was every child asked to show proof of a card, vaccine card? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Scott, the public comment that you have?
Yes, this was submitted by Courtney McGowan of East Marotta Lane. Let's see. "I was very sad that my nieces were turned away from the homecoming dance because they were not vaccinated. They were so excited and looked forward to attending this dance for months. It's the first year they were in a school together, and after last year's depressing school year, the school did not make clear what the expectations were, then gave them a hard time when they asked for a refund. Everything is new with the pandemic and the school should be a neutral and safe place for fostering community and unity. That was not the case with Milpitas High for homecoming. Very disappointed."
Thank you, Scott. Keisha McGowan. Just to state your name for the record and then go ahead.
My name is Kaylia Bigum and I am a senior at Milpitas High. It's my first year. Let's see, I wrote. "Starting off, the school had an amazing first impression on me until the night of the homecoming dance. Leading up to the night of the homecoming, I made sure to change my work schedule, which ultimately did hurt my paycheck. The first day, the tickets went on sale for $15. I went after school and stood in line for an hour and 15 minutes just to purchase a ticket. The girl that sold me the ticket did not notify me that the ticket was non-refundable or the requirements to attend the dance. On the night of the homecoming, all dressed up, my sister and I stood in line for 45 minutes waiting anxiously to enter the dance. When I finally made it to the front of the line, a parent volunteer asked to see a vaccination card or proof of negative test. I told him I didn't have one. He then responded saying, it seems a handful of kids didn't know they needed one. He then directed me to the administrator. She asked me once again for a vaccination card or a negative test. I expressed my confusion as to why this rule wasn't made clear to everyone. She rudely cut me off explaining that it was a law to require a negative test or vaccination to attend functions. She continued by saying Mr. Manéhas made sure to include that bit of information in the MHS emails and on the school website. After all that, she told me that I could collect my refund next week. She turned us down in front of our peers as they were able to walk right in. I was extremely embarrassed and I vowed myself to never support any other MHS function again. I later found out that a girl in ASB didn't know about the requirements until the night before the dance. No fine print on the ticket or information was posted on the tens of posters plastered all around the school."
We'll continue.
"The following Monday, I went to the student bank and after I explained the situation and revealed my vaccination status, they rudely declined me a refund. I had to remind them that we were not told the tickets were non-refundable after purchasing, nor was there a fine print. A few minutes of going back and forth, they finally told me to go to Mr. Manéhas' room. He wasn't there that day. So a student told us that she would write down our ID numbers and that he would get back to us shortly. He never did." He never did. To date, we still haven't received a refund, nor has anyone acknowledged or expressed empathy."
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Deanna and I also have one. Good evening. My name is Deanna Bigum and I'm a freshman at Mel Peters High. As my sister said, I was super excited to be at MHS. Not only was this my first year in high school, but the only year I could spend with my sister. I was extremely devastated that I was turned down at the door the night of the homecoming. So much that I bailed, so much that I bawled my eyes out later that night. While at home, I realized not only did you steal my freshman homecoming experience, you stole time that I could never get back. I stood in line for 45 minutes to enter the dance just to be turned away. I never thought that I would be discriminated against due to my vaccination status. I spent weeks preparing for the homecoming. I even bought a new pair of heels with my birthday money, money that I saved for months due to the fact that I was not, that I do not have a job. Not to mention, I also bought makeup and accessories to match. My money was wasted and so was my time. You really let me down."
Thank you. Superintendent, of course, we're gonna ask for the follow-up with the leadership at the high school in terms of what these young ladies experienced. Your name?
Keisha McGowan, I'm their mom.
There we go, Keisha. Thank you.
Hi. Um, so my name is Keisha McGowan. I'm the mother of Deanna and Kaylia Bigum. I just wanted to express how completely disappointed I am in the school and the way they chose to handle the situation. Um, like my daughter said initially, they were so excited to be back in the swing of things, going to school together for the first time since elementary. And they wanted to, you know, they were excited to experience events such as dances, games, clubs. Um, but the night when my daughter caught me to pick them back up, just an hour after I dropped them off, I was confused. For one, I didn't understand the rule because they had already attended games together and no one had asked them to show a vaccine card or a negative test. Both events took place outside. Both events, all the kids wore masks and social distancing was encouraged. Um, that's why I was confused. Um, I was also confused by the rudeness that they experienced from the administrator. It wasn't their fault that there was a lack of communication from the staff. And I felt like they were taking it out on them as though they weren't paying attention or something. They were treated, I don't like how they were treated. Also, when I picked them up, they weren't the only kids standing outside waiting to be picked up. So I know that it wasn't just an oversight on my kids' part. And instead of apologizing or showing some type of empathy towards them, they just brushed them off. And I just wanted to remind you guys and the staff and everything, just to be gentle with the kids because we're all going through something. And depression is high, anxiety is high for these kids. And so I know there was a recent tragedy not too long ago. So just be extra cautious when dealing with them. There's no need to be rude at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's fun to say that my my, my heart hurts hearing that story and I'm really sorry that you and the girls experienced that. And I, I just want to say, I wasn't personally involved, but this doesn't reflect what I believe students and families should be experiencing. So I'm sorry you experienced this. And if maybe we could look into getting, getting them a refund, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So Superintendent, as we had just mentioned earlier, want to do the follow-up with the with the high school. And as Mom said, you know, we're, we are dealing with a very sensitive time with the children and that we need to be thoughtful in that way. So we do have your contact. We have your contact information. So you will be hearing from either the district superintendent's office or you will be hearing directly from the high school in the, in the very immediate future. And thank you for having the courage to come up and tell that story because the other kids that experienced the same thing, they should have been here too. They should have let us know that that had, that story happened as well. So we appreciate, because we know what it's like coming up to that mic. So thank you very much for your courage and the opportunity to be here. Good job.
Yes, thank you very much. And y'all hear from both of us.
There was also a comment earlier on from the members of the A B MHS ABC boosters. Um, and then there was a comment from Joseph Weinstein and Jeff Lamb. So I, I like Principal Rojas and Athletic Director Jo- Joanna Butcher to be involved in taking the feedback that they had considered because originally the proposal for the discontinuance or not approving the MOU came from the principal. So in terms of what they have brought to this, attention to this board, in terms of what happens in the future, he needs to have a plan for that so that we can decide what our next steps are. Um, we are grateful for everyone wanting to move this process forward and everybody to be involved. So we appreciate your effort and your energy and we're doing the best that we can as well. We all know that this is a, this is a process and we're gonna go through our ups and downs to get it solved. And I really appreciate those that volunteered this last Friday, just out of the goodness of your heart. It, it showed a lot. So thank you for that. Are there any additional comments from the public?
Board, President Norwood, I just would have to address Jessica Lee, who has her hand raised again. Unfortunately, Jessica, you're only allowed one public comment at this time. That doesn't mean that if you have some follow-up comments or questions that you could email the board or the superintendent and get some clarification on those. But as far as proceedings, we can't allow a second comment.
Thank you, Scott. Item 11, item 11, MUSD 2018-21 Strategic Goals. Your, your presence here tonight and all the different comments that we received are a big part of the strategic goals. And you identified a couple of ones that we continually need to work towards as a district. The first one is building a culture of we that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting student success. Improving communication systems. There was definitely a breakdown in communication. So thank you for sharing that. Develop educational pathways for students to make social, emotional and academic gains. That's clearly a strategic goal that we did not meet. And then also always identify creative student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Thank you for the reminders, community, that we are a work in progress. Thank you, Mr. Jung, for bringing up the, the hope for the unhoused and the work that you guys are doing and you're continuing to do on behalf of the residents of, of Mel Peters that do not have homes at this time. Item 12 on the agenda, superintendent's report, 12A recognitions.
Thank you, President Norwood. And yes, thank you very much to our students and family for being here tonight and sharing your experience. And we will try, we will do better for the rest of the year and especially look forward to maybe having some other opportunities for you as a freshman and a senior sister to share this year together. All right. So first, I would like to recognize our Ms. Suzette Brahmajum. She is Vice President of our Classified School Employees Association of Mel Peters Unified. And she is also one of our staff secretaries who works closely with Executive Director Mary G. Dorpinghaus. And with all of that that she does, she managed to find some time to co-author legislation to fully fund transitional kindergarten. So we'd like to recognize you for your dedication to all learners.
Thank you. If I could say a couple words. Is it on? I can't, it's hard to hear when I'm talking. So, okay, okay. So, um, I kind of wanted to share what that process is. Because it's, it is actually quite amazing what happened here. So thank you Superintendent Jordan, the board and executive cabinet for this recognition. This was not an individual process. There were many people involved in the path to fully funding transitional kindergarten. Accept the recognition on the behalf of all who played a part in the success. It started in fall of 2018 from a conversation at a meeting I was at when we realized that TK students are not funded until they actually turn age five. And a collective, well, that isn't right, which led to, let's write a resolution for the conference. I was asked along with Debbie Narvez, who at the time was the president of Berriessa Chapter, a neighboring CSA chapter, to co-author the resolution. The CSA Resolution Committee reviewed the resolution, approved it to go forward at the annual conference in July of 2019. More than 1,300 delegates representing over 250,000 CSA classified members approved the resolution. The CSA Government Relations Department then went to work in Sacramento garnering support and moving this forward. Assembly member Kevin McCarthy authored what became known as AB22. Much work was done with budget committees, assembly and senate members, the education department and many others. There were starts and stops, revisions all along the way. COVID hit, everyone on, everything went on pause, then it picked up again. And in October of 2021, AB22 was written into the budget as a four-year phase-in line item. Then Governor Newsom signed it into law. And here we are. It's amazing and totally overwhelming to me that this simple conversation could end up something so incredibly huge. I'm, I'm really honored and happy to have been part of this process. I would have never dreamed it. And, but it makes me also feel very humble. And I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would next I would like to recognize from the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco. And they do also have a location here in Mel Peters. For their tremendous support of all of our community and our students throughout COVID, they provided masks as well as hand sanitizer and special soaps. So we'd like to thank you for your donation. And if you would like to say a few words, Jennifer, please do. Thank you, board. My name is Jan Petru from Taipei, in the cultural office in San Francisco. One tower mission in the USA. Today with me is Martin Cole, my colleague. Thank you. When California opened its schools in April, we had taken a new right way that we wanted to do something to offer our support. And we felt that donating COVID-19 70 kids was one of the best things that we could do. And we truly hope that our small donation was able to help the school of Mel Peters provide a safer and a more comfortable environment for teachers, students and staff. And you might know that our culture center is just not far from this very building, right? And we consider ourselves your neighbors. Yeah. So we hope that, you know, it makes us to feel that we are closer. And we hope, uh, we look forward to working together and supporting each other in the future. And thank you again. Have good night. Thank you. We have another recognition from the Compassionate Service Society who also dedicated time and effort in providing masks for our students. So I would like to invite you to come up as well and say a few words.
Hello, school board. This is my first time in front of the, a school board, this, you know. This is a really I think it's something, I believe it's how I say it. A yin to, to, to meet you because I never, we are from San Jose and we are nonprofit organization dedicate our time in doing teaching integral Tai Chi and meditation to the community. All our classes are free for the community. Myself, I'm general practitioner and I will retire very soon at the end of the month to take care of the center. And by coincidence, I met Robert and we had a donation from mask and sanitizer. And when he say, oh, you know, I can use it for the homeless for his organization. And then he mentioned about your school district and a gift for the, the, the teacher who start to come back to the school. We found it so wonderful. It's really a great opportunity to serve the community. Even it's in Mel Peters or wherever. It's, yeah, so we were so happy that these masks and sanitizer was able to reach the hand of the teacher who's a frontline. And especially at that time, it was a very, you know, very difficult time. So I'm really very honored to serve the community on behalf of my, my group Compassionate Service Society. Thank you.
Okay. Item twelve B.
Oh, we're not done yet. Sorry.
We didn't recognize him.
Well, we have one more recognition. On Thursday, it is Veterans Day. And so with the Board's support and direction, we have assembled a recognition of veterans for our MUSD community. Mr. Forsner?
And that was a list of, we, we sent out a parent square message to all our families and to all our staff members. If they wanted to honor a relative, a friend who had served and is a veteran, they just simply filled out a, a Google survey, gave us their name, and I broke them up into branch right there.
Thank you. I also appreciate the music that goes with each section of the Armed Forces. And then on Veterans Day, you'll share it out with everybody. And so there's still an opportunity for those who might have missed the opportunity to share their friend, colleague, loved one. And then we'll have it out again on Veterans Day. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to do our bi-weekly Moving Forward Together COVID Update. So it's interesting, as we look at the case rates amongst the vaccinated and unvaccinated overall, as compared to two weeks ago, there is a slight uptick. So for the vaccinated case rate, it's up about point four. For the unvaccinated, it's up about five percentage points, and overall is up one point two. So it's important that we continue to stay vigilant with our masks and with making sure that we get tested and also get the vaccine, if that's something that we feel we should do for ourselves and for others. Here we have our numbers of people who have been vaccinated in the county. Those who are twelve and older and have received at least one dose, it's ninety point two percent now, which is only point two percent up from where it was two weeks ago. So the numbers of vaccinated is slowing. As we look at those who are fully vaccinated, it's eighty-five point five percent. And again, that's only about a half percent more than it was last, last time we reported. And same with the sixteen and older group of those who have at least one vaccinate, one of the vaccine doses is eighty-six point six, and prior it was about eighty-five point eight. So we're, we're increasing a little bit on the vaccination rates, excuse me, increasing a little bit on the COVID cases countywide and also almost plateauing on vaccination rates. So take what you will about the correlation there. Looking at our own case rates here in the district, since we last reported, we have now a total of eighty, eighty-two, and that's up about fifteen from the last time. It is essential that we continue with our weekly testing because that plus the vaccine are our two greatest tools against containing the virus. So we will continue to do our weekly testing so that we can identify those who are carriers and isolate in order to prevent outbreaks. And I must say that it's, we've been in session since August twelfth, and we have not had an outbreak. Looking at Milpitas, as you can see, Milpitas residents twelve-plus years old and fully vaccinated is a higher percentage than if we look overall at the Santa Clara County. And here again, although it's ninety-three percent, that is still a plateau compared to where it was last, the last time we reported. However, we have a new change. The FDA has approved for emergency purposes vaccinations for children five to eleven. The vaccination dose is not the same dose as it is for adults. And there have been clinical trials which led up to the FDA's emergency approval. On Sunday, the city sponsored a vaccination clinic for ages five to eleven. And I'm very much looking forward to our sponsorship of a vaccination clinic. We have been in constant communication with Santa Clara County Public Health and with the County Office of Ed as they are working together to have COVID vaccination sites at school districts. And it looks like tentatively, our date is going to be November twentieth. It has not yet been confirmed though, but you can put on your calendars that tentatively November twentieth will be a time in our schools when you can come on a Saturday to have your child vaccinated. And in the meantime, you can go to santa clara county freevax.org and identify other places in the county where you can do, go for drop-in vaccinations as well as make appointments. I know that CVS and also Walgreens both offer vaccinations by appointment. And I'd like to turn our attention to our Navigator Series. For tonight, we have Ms. Kelsey Taku. It was our, one of our teachers at Curtina, and she also leads our student government at Curtina. Mr. Forsner?
So my name is Kelsey Taku. I am a fifth grade teacher at Curtina Elementary School. I'm also the student council advisor. For the past week, my students have been working on similes. We have a big focus of figurative language in fifth grade. For today, the lesson was all about writing similes that describe who they are. I really liked the lesson because I felt like it, it focused on similes and what we're learning in class, the academics. But it also was a big focus on SEL, which is social emotional learning. We're placing a big focus on making sure the students know their strengths. When we start a lesson, we all start together as a whole class. We have discussions together. Sometimes we take notes together. And then after that, I think it's really important that the students work together. They learn more when they're able to communicate and talk with each other. And especially because they've been at home for the past year and a half, I think they're craving that sharing. So I started off as student council advisor six years ago. This year and for the past six years, I try to make it a thing where they show leadership and learn leadership skills. Something that we do is we plan and organize Spirit Day events. Something we tried last year, which we're going to continue, is we make Curtina news videos with just different announcements and different ways to get the school excited and to show unity. We just had Halloween last week. And so something that Student Council organized was a costume contest. And so today we will be voting on who is going to win the costume contest. In general, I think my favorite thing is teaching the kids just how to be kind. And then seeing them apply those, those things out in the real world. I see them being kind with each other and being kind to others at recess and, and lunch recess. And I think that's something that, as a teacher, just warms my heart.
Thank you. Thank you for continuing the Navigator Series and let us see the different voices of the school district and the experiences that they're having. So that their peers and also the community have the opportunity to see those as well. So thank you very much for continuing the very, very strong Navigator Series. We are on item thirteen, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Reports.
Let's go ahead and start with our Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations.
Okay, usually start with the school, but you're saving the school for last. Always throwing the curve ball. Okay, so first and foremost, we've been in negotiations with our Milpitas Teachers Association. And we had one day of negotiations that went very well. We're making great progress. I'd like to give a special shout out to the two teams for MTA, Diana Orlando, Ashley Grilli, Brett Weber, Liz Pitts, Michael Hickey from CTA, and Clarissa Esbel. Also from the district, we have Mr. James, Wendy Zhang, Priti Johari, Casey McMurray, Jerry Lopez, Juliana Brahim, Hannah Ostrat, Skylar Drager, and our attorney, Greg Danis. I think we're going to probably have another announcement later at our next board meeting about the Jack Emery, but I thought I'd just give it a couple announcements. So a special thanks to Karen Colander for organizing this event for our community each and every year. Jack Emery was a gentleman who came from poverty and thought of others first. And we continue his legacy in this community since nineteen fifty-two. And it has grown to the point where we can't do enough for all of our families, but we give it as best effort as we can. So thank you, Karen, for your stalwart efforts. Our former student board member Kush Brumbart is the leader at the high school. Brumbart, thank you, is our leader at the high school, and he has done an amazing job in his communications with his activities director, Jerome Maneha, our principals, and all of our leaders across the district. And each year, it looks like the Board always competes against the exec cabinet for
Well, not always, and
Since I've been around.
Well, we did, we'll, we'll talk off.
Okay, all right. Yeah, well, I just wondered if the challenge is going to begin soon, so that's all. It's for our kids and our community to support them. But I just want to encourage our community to think about others as we work through the, the cloud of COVID. And we have families that could use our support. I just want to thank our wonderful students getting this organized each and every year. That's my report.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Executive Director Druppinghaus. And also, just so the Board is aware, Executive Director Priti Johari is attending a family function today.
Good evening. On behalf of Executive Director Priti Johari, and I am pleased to share that we had a successful November first Professional Development Day. Our morning was launched with a kickoff by our Culture of We and Equity team, which provided us with the opportunity for us to work on building and applying an equity lens and also some time for some personal reflection as well. This was followed by site-based work. Some of our leaders at the sites piggybacked on what occurred earlier in that morning. Others focused on other topics that were needed at their sites. And we ended the day with a training on Otis, which is the Learning Management System. And that was led by our tech department. Next week, our LND, our Learning and Development Leadership Team, will be facilitating our administrators. PLC Professional Learning Community will continue to focus on culturally relevant teaching practices and pedagogy, and will be connecting this work to the classroom. Also, Priti and I worked this week with Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang as we worked to outline a plan for the Educator Effectiveness Grant, which will be bringing to the Board at a future date. And finally, this week is National Psychology, School Psychology Week. So we wanted to send out a big shout out to all of our amazing psychologists for their dedication and support of students and staff, especially during these trying times. Not just this week, but throughout the whole year through. This concludes our Learning and Development Report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang.
Thank you. Good evening. I have two reports for tonight. The first is from our Business Services Team. We'll continue to work on the district's first major budget update. A budget study session will be held on December fourteenth. We would discuss the details of the one-time funding as well as the projections of the district's current financial position. We welcome all MUSD staff members and the community to attend. Second report is on October ninth, nineteenth, we had our Parcel Tax Overset Committee meeting. Staff reviewed last year's and the current year's expenditures. Staff also shared a comparison of the parcel tax rates within the Santa Clara County School District, as well as how districts are funded. I'm happy to report that the information was well received. That concludes my two reports for tonight.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite to the podium Principal Jahari and Assistant Principal Juliana. Juliana Flores.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. Thank you for having us over here to share our Spangler updates. I am Parwinder Joel, Ms. Jordan. And here is Juliana Flores, our Assistant Principal. Spangler has gone through a successful transition to in-person learning plus a new admin team. And we've done this by really keeping practices transparent and lines of communication open among staff, students, and families. And we have really taken to heart our MUSD strategic plan goals to build a culture of shared leadership. And, and we have really started planting the seeds of redesigning our school's internal operations by creating different leadership teams to create a long-term and systematic transformation.
Our goal is to keep relationships at the center of our work by asking ourselves, how do we relate to our students and families? How do we relate to each other? And how do we relate to ourselves? To help us present, we included different voices from our school community. And we have a video that we sent in.
Hi, my name is Tanya Rayner, Principal Secretary here at Spangler Elementary. As many of you have noticed, we have a new front office team. Please, when you have a moment, come say hello. We have Ms. Claudia, who's our new staff secretary. Ms. Allison, who is our new full-time, I know you're gonna love it, health clerk, who's here all day with us now, along with Principal Joel and Assistant Principal Flores. We here at Spangler are striving to put relationships at the center for parents, students, staff.
I'm Nanya.
And I'm Zade, and we are part of Spangler Speaks. We film events to broadcast them across the school. This way, students are able to see the events even if they weren't able to participate.
Some things we have filmed are the Halloween parade, the primary sports event, and an interview with our principal, Ms. Joel.
Some other videos we plan on filming are comic strips, how to play recess activities, and more interviews. We hope that this will bring students together by informing them about what is happening around the school.
We hope to encourage students to participate in these events and bring our school together. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maya.
And I'm Nora.
And we are a part of the student leadership team.
This year, leadership has been focusing on engaging students in fun school activities after the long pandemic.
After a year of students not being on campus, we want to bring everyone together to socialize and build relationships by planning fun activities for all grades.
So far this year, we have held fun door decorating contests, recess activities, art projects, and after-school snack shack.
We hope that after these activities, students will be excited to participate in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie Lasgetti. I have four kids here in Spangler Elementary, Milpita School District. We are new here. What I really appreciate about the faculty here is that they have a What I really appreciate about the faculty here is that they have amazing communications through email, Parents Square, and in person. What mostly that I appreciate about the teachers is that they don't just teach and care about the students as students, but they care for them like parents.
Hi, everyone. My name is Safo Chow, and I am part of the Spangler SCL team. A quick update, we did a Halloween parade on October twenty ninth, where all of our students came together if they wanted to wear costumes. And we did a parade on our blacktop because our families cannot be on campus. We wanted to invite all of our families as well. So we did a live stream on Zoom that the parents can also go back and watch the recording. The teachers and staff had a theme where we all dressed up as the one on one domination to kind of bring that spirit and connect all our staff together. Right now, we are currently working on our talent show that we want to implement for our school, for our students. And we are also working on our science camp fundraisers to get ready for our trip in February. We're looking forward to more festivities and activities for everyone in our Spangler community.
So this year, we have been put into leadership committees, and we are in charge of different things. It's helped us to build a sense of community and a sense of shared leadership. So one of the things that we are in charge of is PTA. So my group is called Parent Engagement. And we are in charge of things like PTA and creating different opportunities for parents to be involved. So so far, right now, in terms of PTA, we have helped to really maintain relationships and build a PTA that is now completely new at Spangler. And other things that we're in charge of, and we're kind of in the works for doing our types of things like multicultural night and working on getting parents involved in terms of submitting different videos or getting onto Zoom together. And the possibilities are endless right now. And to get onto Zoom together to talk about the differences and things that we celebrate, different holidays and so on. So it's a really great opportunity for us as teachers to work with one another and to use our skills and our different grade level experiences to really help the school thrive and work together to be one big community of we. Thank you.
Thank you, board, and thank you, cabinet. Thank you, Principal Joel and Principal Flores. Particularly appreciate your three relationship prompt and how the staff is working collectively to share the leadership. As Mrs. B D said, to build a culture of we.
Thank you.
Also have to thank you for taking this opportunity because you were well beloved and respected at the district office. And you took off that cape and went over to the elementary school where we had a need in the district. And you fulfill that need. And the work that you I hear that you're doing over there is very positive and the community is accepting it very well. So thank you again.
That concludes our executive cabinet reports.
Let's put a placeholder toward the end of the meeting or at some point, it possibly talked about the check in rain. In terms of what we may do, because we've got we got one more board meeting this month. Are you okay with talking about Jack and read the next board meeting? Or do you want to talk about it? It's put it toward the end of this agenda.
If there's time at the end of the agenda, it'd be great.
Okay, all right.
Talk about it.
All right, thank you for that. Item thirteen, we did that item fourteen board group agreements. We're going to waive time on the board group agreements. So we're going to move straight to item fifteen board communication requests. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items on future board agendas, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to ninety seconds each. Do we have any Scott, do we have any student board reps in the audience?
Yes, we do. We have our two student board reps right now. Let's start with Mira Bacta of our middle college high school.
Am I good to start?
Yeah, go right ahead, Mira.
My school board and various community members that are present here today. At our school, we are currently in the progress of planning which classes we will be taking in the spring semester. Mr. Castro and Mr. Granger both helping us with this. Mr. Castro is holding an informational meeting to help us with our R forty forums and how to register for classes on November tenth, which is tomorrow. And Mr. Granger is allowing us on campus on November twenty fourth to help with registration, since that is our registration date. We are currently coming to the end of our second grading period. I want to thank the school board and district for the transportation to the main campus, which definitely helps the health science pathway enroll in lab sciences next semester. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mira. Next up, we have a student board rep from Milpitas High School, Sydney Wong.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Sydney Hong, the student board representative from Milpitas High School. Nothing major has happened since the last meeting about two weeks ago, but there has been a food sale last week where the clubs and organizations on campus took a part of. This highlighted the diversity on campus and the potential support as seen through students purchasing many goods. Just earlier today, Jack Emory was kicked off, and it is very much in its early stages. Additionally, the winter auction has started, and student, staff, and all friends are able to donate a good or services sale. And then all the proceeds will go towards Jack Emory. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, board member Minno.
Good evening, board members and community. I'll take this time to report back on the the Santa Clara School Boards Association meeting that I attended this time in relation to our strategic goal number two in regards to improve communication systems. They discussed and had a panel of school boards that talked about board office hours and how that's conducted within the Brown Act and how to increase community engagement with parents, students, and staff as a listening environment. So bringing that back, I would like to see either a future board retreat or a board agenda where we could discuss that possibility here at MUSD. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Poor member Michael Sa.
Good evening, everyone. Brief thing to know, I have been sitting near the door for better ventilation. So since the last board meeting, I went to the SCC SBA fall event. Had some SCC SBA Zoom meetings. I was also joining the earlier discussion about school board office hours. Join the virtually the MUSD Jack Emory kickoff, which is a food drive program that's going on. Did some other activities and continuing to keep abreast of current trends with what's going on in the world of education. And well, that's my time. Thank you.
Poor clerk on the end.
Yes, thank you, President Norwood. Good evening, community members. I had a quick report here. I attended the SCC SBA fall dinner along with all my fellow board members, attended the MUSD team hall, and I helped at the concession at the football last Friday night. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Yip Twan.
Good evening, everyone. Here's my report for the last two weeks. Attended the fall, the SCC SBA dinner. The CBAC meeting, the MUSD team hall meeting, chamber board meeting, SBA meeting, Jack Emory drive kickoff earlier. And then Jonathan, you're talking about challenge. Are you ready to get your head shaved off? Bring it on.
Oh, I'll see what you started. Thank you, Vice President Yip Twan. With my colleagues, I was able to do the 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 dinner. I also participated in the Legislative Action Committee meeting for the Santa Clara County School Boards Association. Had a conversation with the Senator Dave Cortez regarding his special ed initiatives and what that looks like in terms of twenty twenty two, twenty-three in terms of future funding. The list is just long, so I'll yield the rest of the time. No worries. Thank you. Super item sixteen A reports, time for public comments. Will come after each staff presentation sixteen A report, student report, climate matters, climate action, youth day.
So I'm very excited to have Mia Gupta here with us tonight. Not only is she the founder and creator of Clyde Matters when where she is very active with students, not only at Rancho where she attends school, but also other students in our elementary schools. And this summer, the city council appointed Mia Gupta as one of the youth advisory committee's representatives. And so I've asked her to give us quarterly reports on both climate matters as well as the youth advisory committee. And so, Mia, would you mind coming to the microphone and sharing your report for tonight?
The commission.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a great day so far. My name is Mia Gupta. I'm an eighth grader and student council president at Rancho. I'm here to give some updates on climate since the last time I spoke in February. In the past few weeks, global leaders have came come together for one of the biggest climate summits, the COP twenty-six, which is also known as the United Nations Climate Summit. In the twenty-sixth year of the summit, which took place in Glasgow, Scotland, Fridays for Future Activists took to the streets to demand the need to defund fossil fuels, which is one of our biggest causes of the climate crisis. The message to leaders was clear. There's no more time for promises. We need action now. Here's what we've been doing as climate matter in our own little way. This is our journey. Climate Matter started in November twenty twenty with the goal to raise awareness towards climate change at schools. Our first step towards awareness was including environmental tips in our school advisory announcements. So far, since last school year, we've made approximately thirty tips. We invited one chief planted representatives to speak about their initiative of saving forests. Our Earth Day activities included an environmental pledge, a spare away day to wear green or blue, and a PSA to share the voices of Rancho about their thoughts on our changing planet. And of course, I've been speaking about our initiatives in the MUSD board meetings. Our future plans include continue with our advisory tips and and suggest encourage other MUSD schools to do the same. Brainstorm ideas with other student council members across MUSD schools to find ideas to explain environment challenges to our younger students. An example would be read a lot of videos on books related to the environment. We would also give away environmental friendly day to day items such as reusable straws. To add on to this, we would also raise money to for other fundraisers. Something we're currently planning with Rancho ASB is to raise money for this fundraiser called TNCs, or one dollar donated removes one pound of waste from our oceans. And we and we also plan to arrange environmental quote unquote TED Talks for our fifth and sixth graders. We also continue to contribute to our blog and Instagram page and participate along in our Fridays for Future activities. And I would like to, and I've been reaching out to a bunch of our elementary schools and received a lot of positive responses. And we've been starting to take initiatives in schools such as Weller, Spangler, Randall, Maddos, and Kirtner. And also, as Superintendent Jordan mentioned, at the beginning of the year, I was invited to join the Youth Advisory Commission of Milpitas as a commissioner. I hope to use my role as the at the YAC to organize citywide youth events to raise awareness funds for and funds to for climate related activities. With that, I conclude my report. Once again, I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity. And I'm looking forward to our next steps to make climate a lasting part of our culture of we.
Yeah, great report. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that is so amazing. The the amount of ideas coming out of you and just the passion. They, you know, trying to make it a better place, not in the future, but right now. It just, it really does matter. So continue on the path that you're going.
Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Scott, are there any comments from the public?
Could I make some remarks? I just wanted to say I think that's awesome, and it's glad that you're stepping up at such an early age for this. Because, you know, compared to your generation, we're considered old. You know, the the things that we government does or does does or doesn't do today is going to affect the next fifty to hundred years. And that's the planet that your generation is going to grow up in. And I think we really need to put into work today to make that a sustainable planet.
Thank you. Scott, are there any comments from the public?
We have no hands raised at this time, President Norwood.
Thank you for the wonderful job. We look forward to these reports continually as. And I guess I would have one question for you. How could this board currently continue to support your efforts with climate matters?
I would, I would request to reach out to our elementary leaders and help them establish like a little climate matter bench at at their school. And I can help guide their student council and get them started. It's not really up to me on what they want to do. It's basically, it's their choice. I'm just there to help get them started.
So I think what I heard superintendent, and I'm not quite sure the process that it goes through is that she's looking at the government bodies of our school districts to take on this initiative, to be a part of this initiative throughout the district. So connecting her with the ASB president of the of all the schools and at the elementary schools. However, that needs to be facilitated so that conversation can happen. I think that will be the next step. Got it. Be careful what you ask for. Thank you very much for your presentation. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mia.
Item sixteen A, number two, demonstration of the new gamut policy plus platform superintendent's office.
We have transitioned to gamut online's new platform. And so I've asked Scott, Mr. Forstner, to take a few minutes to show the board and the public how to use it in case there is something that they are interested in searching on our website or about our school policies or procedures, purchase orders, all kinds of things can be found through our board meetings. Mr. Forster.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen right now. I'll have to say that my presentation will not be as thrilling as Mia Gupta's right then. But so essentially, it's the same way to get to our policies. As you see on the screen there, you would go to the about tab. You would go to Board of Education, and the first one is meet the board, board policies. So you'd go over and you'd click that. And then you just scroll down a little bit, and the board policies is right there. So you'll click the board policies. And it's a little different. And so that's why we wanted to bring this to the to the public and the community so they can learn how to navigate it. As you see right here, this is the home screen. It tells us a little bit about our district, our address, phone number, our website, all of our Board of Education members. And if you click their name, you can go to their email and their and their bio. You want to send something out to them. But right here on the top right, it says policies. So you click that. And so this is quite similar to the old gamut. Right here, you have are by category, all of our board policies. And there is a search engine tool here. And there is a search engine tool here. So I would click search and say I'm looking for something on governance. We'll go with that. Over the years, we're not going to limit the range. It's going to be in our policies. We click search. And it gives us a bunch of things here. So we're going to governance standards, which is a board bylaw nine thousand five. We would click on that. And voila, there are governance standards, our board bylaws. And so it's very similar to the other one. If you remember last board meeting, the board had to approve a number of changes to the policy numbers or change in title. And so after that approval, we wanted to show everybody how you get to it, what it looks like, because it is a little bit different. You can also go to the about us. Board of Education. And as you see right here, we've got Board President Chris Norwood, cNorwood@MUSD.org, if anybody wants to send him email. And that is pretty much it. I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding it, but once again, you go to www.mUSD.org. You go to about Board of Education, meet the board, board policies. And then you click on policies and you can search anything you want on there and it'll show up. And if it doesn't, you just let me know.
And also, Mr. Forstner, would you please show us how to search board agendas for topics?
For the agenda. Oh, so you just want the regular. Okay, so we go to, let me share reshare my screens. All right. Okay, so we're going to go to MUSD.org. We're going to go to about. Well, actually, before I go there, I just want to show you if you scroll down. That's a great performance. That's coming up right there. But upcoming board meetings, Board of Education, that's today, November ninth. And if you wanted to look at the agenda, you would click that link. If you wanted to go to Zoom, you'd click there. If you want to watch on YouTube, or if you want to attend in person, we ask that you go to Eventbrite and and just reserve a seat. So we know how many people we have. So you go to about again, Board of Education and click meetings and agendas. And so you'll come to this page and right here it says current school year agendas. You click on that. And then here is a list of all our agendas, which also has a search engine. So I was looking at Russell Track. And it keeps them. There we go. So if I search, so I tried to search Russell Track, but nothing was coming up. So then I generalized my search a little more to just track. And then we have a number of results here. So if you were looking for, oh, what was the contract on the track restoration? And this is Bill Pius High School. You could find all the information here. And then you would just click on it and you would go to that particular agenda. You could see the attachments. So let me, oh, I know why it's like that, because I'm logged in for the meeting. But again, you go to about Board of Education meeting and agendas. We also have our While I'm At It Board Resolutions page. Which Parwinder, you might recognize. Here. But this has the videos, all the videos we show, and it's just taking a minute to for it to load. But all the videos we show here at the meetings, they're stored right here for our resolutions. You can also find our board meeting videos. Hey, I missed the meeting and I heard that this issue was discussed and I'd like to know what happened. So you just go to our MUSD Board of Education meeting videos page. Again, about Board of Education, we're meeting videos. And there it is. And lastly, if you allow me, others to go to Board of Education, I don't want to watch the whole video. You know, I don't have time for that. Well, we've got our board highlights, electronic newsletter. You click on that. And you've got links to that's to our October twelfth board meeting. And look at that. Oh, wow. Ava Woodham's, yeah. Published. Now we just see it right there on our board highlights. And so it gives you kind of a roundup of everything that was handled on that day. And I think I will leave it at that. Back to you, Board President.
Thank you, Scott.
My my laughter or joy was based on the fact that I know you put in a significant amount of effort over time to make this happen. But then also that things that the public may be looking for or need are now even more accessible. Based on the investment that we all put in at these board meetings and the staff puts in at these board meetings, the preparation, the availability of documents, the attachments that are on the agenda, everything that's there transparent for people to see. This, this makes me, this is, this is very encouraging. And hopefully, we can use these tools. So as we get public records requests or any inquiries, we have the ability to direct them to the sources of those types of pieces of information in the source, so they can do the necessary research. Because there's a lot, you know, you know, we're working hard during COVID. The teachers are working hard, the, the, you know, we've got plans and visions and things that we want to get done. And so public records requests need to be honored. However, we also want to be mindful of the time that it requires. So I see a very comprehensive and robust system of support to our families and those that are looking to learn more about the work that we do in Milpitas Unified School District. So thank you for that effort and your leadership.
Yep. And I'd also like to point out that everything that Mr. Forstner just showed us also helps us in achieving our strategic goal number two, improved communication.
Thank you for that reference. Item Reports three, potential twenty twenty one school calendar revision superintendent's office.
Hopefully, the board has seen the survey that went out yesterday to all families, all of our students who have access to parent square and also all of our team members. Last week, I met with the Association's Roundtable, which is made up of leaders of our two unions, as well as our management association and includes our executive cabinet. And we talked about the the burnout that's occurred already, and we're not even halfway through the year, as well as the stress and trauma that people have experienced. And I have to say that while we talk about and we read about and we hear about in the news, the trauma and the need for social emotional learning and mental health. I can say that we don't always take a look in our classrooms and in our offices at how that plays out for the adults, the adult learners. And so we had a in-depth conversation about what could we do to provide was to provide opportunities for well-being. We know that recently, other school districts, both in California, as well as some in other states, have talked about revising school calendars to allow for opportunities for well-being with family and students. And so that's what the survey is about. We will be also doing another survey next week, which will just be for team members, because it'll be talking about what we can do as we continue to work forward together, because the work doesn't stop. However, how do we do that, being very mindful about the people who have to execute what happens in the classrooms? So tonight, I just wanted to share with the board that there is a potential that based on the survey outcomes, if the great majority of respondents, and also if we have a large number of respondents comparable to the numbers of students and staff and parents in the district. We may need to have a special board meeting for the purposes of considering what the survey is saying in regards to moving our Cesar Chavez Recognition Day and also our Professional Development Day from the second semester to possibly the week of Thanksgiving. And if the survey results are such that it indicates that that's what people would like to do, then I'll ask the board for a special meeting so that the board can consider it and determine if they want to take action. However, another opportunity would be that the board could talk about that potential now if it wanted to and provide direction on what to do in case it does seem to be the indicator that's coming forward. I can tell you when I looked at it last, the top opportunity for revising was to move the recognition for Cesar Chavez and the Professional Development Day to the middle of March to create a four day well-being weekend. But if that doesn't maintain its place in the standings and Thanksgiving moves up, which is right now number two, we may need to ask you to to allow for us to make that change in the counter. So it's an opportunity for discussion.
So just a point, a question of clarification, we're talking about. We're talking about, are we talking about adjusting the schedule for this current school year?
Correct.
Okay.
The twenty one, twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. And I see Scott has put up on the screen that twenty one, twenty two school calendar for easier reference.
So I'd like to do at this time, since the report has been concluded, go to Scott. Is there any, is there any public comment?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, so that concludes the public comment section on this particular item. And recognize Boardman No asking for clarification if this was the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. I like to add to that is that I have heard the phrase November burnout. So I want to make sure that when the calendar comes around again, that we ask the question, is this, because you know, the November week is a very unique week. And so the more time that folks have in advance to say this is what it's going to be, they have the opportunity to make some changes in twenty two, twenty three, not right now. So I want to make sure that we catch that ask early on for next year. Those are my comments at this time until we decide if we're going to provide any direction.
So Cheryl, clarification. So we're going to take one day in March to bring it over to November. Is there another day?
Yes, so we have coming up the second semester, we have the January fourteenth Professional Development Day, which is a Friday before Martin Luther King Weekend. And we have Cesar Chavez, our recognition of Cesar Chavez on the last Monday in March, which I think is March twenty eighth. So those two days could be moved potentially to the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. We already have Wednesday, Thursday and Friday off. The other consideration that seems to be that seems to have the greatest percentage of agreement is to move it to the middle of March so that the weekend of March eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen would be a long weekend. So the Friday, the eleventh would be the Professional Development Day, and we can make that a self-directed Professional Development Day. And then the fourteenth would be the Cesar Chavez observation, observed day.
So that's a great point, too. We're still observing Caesar Chavez's day, just a different day, but it doesn't lose its significance. Correct. As far as a celebration. In regards to the November, I think it's too soon as a parent and thinking about parents in our community, it'd be very difficult to adjust any of their work schedules to accommodate those extra days off that had not already. So I understand the November burnout, but understanding the families in our community, I think March might be the better target as far as doing any adjustments to the calendar this year.
March, we don't have that many days up, right? So it's kind of a long month without any days.
So I did look at that. Before I jump back in, I wanted to make sure that everyone.
I know Superintendent Jordan sent out the survey. When are you expecting the survey back?
Friday, and we'll send a reminder again on Thursday.
Let's wait to see what the survey comes back with. If it's in favor of moving the two days to make it the whole week off, then we would honor that. But if parents, like Min said, it is just too short to arrange time off for those little ones. So let's see how it goes. And if we need to have a special meeting, we'll schedule one.
So we would have a special meeting to take the information back with the superintendent presented.
Yeah.
Versus providing the superintendent direction to say what the survey says is what we're going to do, or are we potentially saying that we're going to listen to the survey answers and then decide after we hear the survey.
It all depends on the survey. If the survey comes back with a fifty percent yes, we would like to have a whole week off. And then the other fifty percent says, no, we cannot arrange babysitters in time. What are you going to do? You're going to say yes?
No, I'm gonna ask Wendy.
Okay, Wendy.
No, thank you. Great point. Okay.
I would ask to add a caveat to the survey as far as the number of participants responding back, because if we only had ten people respond back and that's fifty percent, well, that's not reflective of the response from the community. So I would ask for a higher response rate before making a decision.
Yes, and that's why the special meeting would give us the opportunity to discuss and to better decide which way we're going.
That's awesome. That there should be a minimum number of respondents for this decision to be made. So that, that's, that's a good approach. Thank you for that.
Yep.
This is not a vote item, so we have direction in terms of what we're going to do. Awesome. Okay. Report B, Report sixteen B Business Services, QKA. Somebody's going to have to explain that quattrochi to me at some point. QKA Presentation of MUSD Innovation Campus Design Update.
Well, thank you. Tonight, we have Aaron from QKA here to provide the board update on our air innovation campus design. We have had a few meetings with the district leadership, including staff members from both high schools and Calhills and also district. And I mean, from different departments and buildings. And so today we just have Aaron here to do a quick update then where we are.
Thank you. And it's it's quattrochi. And I've been told, I've been told it means four eyes in Italian. And I always just tell people to think gnocchi, and then it, and then it kind of rolls off the tongue a little bit. Thank you for having me here today. I'm happy to present this update. We've been working on this project for a long Thank you for having me here today. I'm happy to present this update. We've been working on this project for a long time. It's the first time I've met any of you in person. So it's an exciting day. Including Cheryl and Wendy, who I've had, I don't know, thirty or forty or fifty meetings with by now, but on Zoom. So it's definitely a weird world that we live in. So we'll start with the campus goals. This is kind of how we start every presentation and most of our meetings is just remembering that this is what we're here to do with this project. And the impact that we want the project to have on the community. Of course. All right. And then we translate those into these design principles, which are about how we you know, translate those goals into what we do with the buildings themselves. And so we'll start with a quick overview of the site. So we are currently sitting right here in the boardroom and that will be one of the buildings that is demolished. And we have two phases to the work that we're under contract for right now. Phase one is for these four buildings that you see kind of in teal here. And phase two is for the two additional new buildings that you see in the kind of red color as well as the renovation of this building. So that will include a district office and adult education in this area. It will include the Milpitas Second High School in this area. Calvaris Hills High School here and then some shared spaces in this building. And down the road, the existing building here will be the replaced or renovated for the Workforce Development Pathway Center and Early Childhood Research and Development Center. I'm going to.
Aaron, will the workforce path, Workforce Development Pathway Center also host the the new school board? Do we know this room or do we know that?
I believe the plan is to look at that either there or I think there's a space at the high school that's part of the design too, but.
No, we're going to have it at the Workforce Development Pathway Center.
Great.
Thank you.
And so looking at the landscape plan. Here you can see those buildings across the campus. So we come in the main entry is here, coming in from the parking lot on the west side, coming into the heart of the campus, which has a large open quad space for gatherings, for presentations. There's a small stage at the end of that that's raised as well. Moving into different courtyards within the different clusters of buildings to create outdoor gathering spaces, outdoor learning environments throughout the campus to support all kinds of different activities. And that's something that's been a topic of conversation throughout the design and planning process. And if we look at that view, kind of an aerial view of that campus, so this is Calvaris Hills Boulevard running along the bottom here. And we can see the existing auditorium building here. And all of the six new buildings are right here. So this is the Milpitas Second High School portion of the campus. This is the District Office and Adult Education portion. This is the Calvaris Hills shared classrooms here. A little behind. I'll try to go talk a little slower. And then go into the next view. So that was the overview of the campus. And this is kind of what that will look like from the main entry, kind of looking from the parking lot. This is kind of a welcome center to welcome everyone to the campus, help them find where they need to go amongst all these different programs that will work together. And that's the view from Calvaris Hills Boulevard, looking at the kind of the side of the of the Second High School and the KLA Steam Lab here. Right there on. And that next. Is the view from one of the balconies looking into the one of the courtyard spaces. So we paid a lot of attention to designing outdoor spaces that can really be part of the learning environment and create kind of spaces for students to create those social connections as well. See that in the next image too. And that's kind of looking at that central quad. Again, kind of that big gathering space, looking back into one of the court guards there. That's the Calvaris Hills Building. And then this is one of the smaller court guards for Milpitas Second High School.
The Milpitas High School Second Campus.
Okay.
Milpitas.
High School Second Campus.
Right, Extension Campus. There's not a second Milpitas High School.
Of course, right. Thank you. So looking here, the floor plans for the first two buildings, there's a welcome center here that you come into with conference rooms and a reception desk. There is administrative area for the adult education campus. And then the purple spaces are the adult education classrooms. As well as restrooms too. And on the second floor, we have the district office function. So the superintendent's office is here, the conference room here. There is the assistant department here, business services across the top here. And, and then learning and development along this wing and student services along this wing with a staff lounge that is shared by the whole campus here on this corner. And they're all connected by covered outdoor balconies, which is kind of what you see here, connecting all these spaces and providing access between them. These are some renderings of the interior. So this is that welcome hub coming in, creating an environment that really welcomes the public in, provides kind of that professional feel for all the learners and partners coming to this campus. View of one of the office spaces, really bringing a lot of view of one of the office spaces, bringing a lot of natural light into that space, creating you know, efficient and workspaces, but also really bright and inviting workspaces for, for the staff. And then looking at the Milpitas High School Second Campus portion of the project. We have a, the administrative area here for that portion of the campus and then classrooms around that. And that includes three of our steam labs. Which you can see here, which each one includes kind of classroom learning space with movable tables. It includes a storage space. It also includes equipment space and a connection to an outdoor work yard as well. Move into the second floor, there are additional classroom spaces. There's an additional teacher workspace. And then there are also two double sized tech lab spaces as well. See here. A rendering of that steam lab. So you see that kind of flexible teaching and learning space in the front of overhead power. We have screens on, on the different parts of the classroom as well. You can see the storage space kind of in the back here. Some of the rest of learning environment there and then going outdoors to the, the outdoor work area connected to it through the windows there as well. This is one of the teacher collaboration spaces. So these are, in each program, there's a space like this that it provides a collaborative workplace for the staff to work either individually, collaborate as a group. And then you can see some small conference rooms there for meetings and working on things as a group as well. Last shot is of one of the digital tech labs. So this shows one of the second level class, double classrooms. Flexible furniture, a lot of daylight, really high quality learning spaces to support the innovative programs at this campus. That's the end of the update. Any questions that I can answer?
Chris Cheryl and I attended the meeting with Aaron many times.
So can you just give us a brief, I guess, timeline, like, you know, when the construction, the demo? You know, when will we fully up functional? Just a quick timeline.
Sure. And I'll ask Ryan to jump in here and help me if I mess anything up. Ryan Holman is our partner with Block Construction. He's going to be the contractor out here. And so we're submitting the first phase of the project to DSA before the end of the year. We anticipate starting construction on that next summer, summer of twenty twenty two. And then we will start construction on the following phase, the second phase. So the, the last two buildings and the renovation of Building six hundred will start in summer of twenty twenty three and be complete the following summer.
So I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just curious. So twenty twenty four, that's when we'll have it up.
Yeah, that's when all six of the new buildings will be.
From a visual perspective, I don't remember all the building numbers here. So where, where's the construction actually starting as far as the phase on this property and that superintendent, like the, the staff that's already here on the campus now, where are they shifting during the construction?
Before COVID, that was was going to be a very intricate process because we were going to demolish the building one hundred, build, move people over, demolish, build, move people over. Rent portables, bring them over. But now that we know that with COVID, people can work remotely. So we haven't gotten into the details, but nor have I discussed this with any of our staff at the district office. But the direction I would heading is that we will have different teams either at other school sites together or some of the buildings here on campus that won't be demolished assigned to those buildings, but by, by teams. And then depending on the numbers of teams in the space available, we may need to look at having a combination of work from home and work from their temporary site.
And just to answer the first question, we've very intentionally kind of designed and located the buildings to dovetail with what Cheryl just said and kind of minimize that impact. And so in the first phase, the only two buildings that need to be demolished are actually this building. And then I think it's building one hundred that's right next to it, which is the closest to the street. And then we will demolish building two hundred immediately after these buildings are finished, or actually the next two, three and four hundred. As we go into the second phase. So that'll allow people to move out of those spaces and into the new buildings before we need to demolish them. So we're, we're able to kind of position the buildings and make that work. So we really only have to demolish the two buildings and in sort of this one plus the one office building.
No, I appreciate that because with your target of twenty twenty four, I think our original target was what, twenty twenty five?
Actually, it was twenty twenty three, late twenty twenty three.
Late twenty twenty three, right? So the, to that point, COVID had presented an opportunity to hit these or catch up as far as construction, construction wise, but I appreciate the, the target of twenty twenty four. You know, it's a long time coming for this community and this district to see the innovation campus really break around.
So we're looking forward to.
Are there any comments from the public?
We have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Good to see you.
You too.
Person.
Finally, we can match the face to the name.
Likewise, thank you very much.
There, there, there are several things that are, you know, as we know, there are some moving parts to this and we have a vision. And the fact that you're here today is reminding the district staff to talk about. Okay, if, if all the stars line up, then there needs to be a transition plan for the district office staff that's clear and articulated. By the end of, hopefully by the end of the year, maybe the end of January. So everybody has a very clear plan if we plan to move forward with this, of course. With, as you had mentioned, these different times that we're living in, we have to be very thoughtful. So yes, would we like to get started this summer? Yes. Yes, do we have a tentative plan in place which has a series of actions? Because again, you submit to DSA.
Right.
Right, because, because.
There's still some variables in that process.
Right, because I remember you told me six months ago, I don't know, I don't remember when it was, but there was, there was a delay at DSA over at Mattos. Which was completely unexpected. So we do have the tentative plan, but there are some stakeholders or variables that could change that plan.
Absolutely.
So but at least the district should be cognizant of letting the staff have ample ramp up time or preparation for that and multiple options on that potentially moving forward. So thank you for your presentation and sharing these different, this has been a long time coming and we are extremely excited for it. And as woman Renee O said, the community is really looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. To say. Um, yeah, so thank you for your presentation. I think it is important that we, we think about what design landscape is going to look like after the pandemic and in a world with remote work. Thank you.
So we're at item report B two, Measure AA Bond Projects, Update Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Yes, tonight we also have Travis Kirk and our construction management firm. The owner of the firm that do a quick presentation to share with the board on our Measure AA Bond Project. Travis.
Good evening, Board President Norwood, members of the Board Superintendent Jordan. Glad to be here tonight to present this update for you. Appreciate Aaron and Ryan and their teams and all that they provided and dozens and dozens of meetings we've had to get to this point with the Innovation Center. One point of transparency with the Innovation Center that we need to talk about a little bit is budget. We started with the budget when we first engaged these two companies. Since then, a worldwide pandemic has occurred, which has triggered numerous negative effects, at least which is not the supply chain issue that we currently face. The cost of steel has tripled, cost of lumber tripled and then came back down to earth. Cost of HVAC, cost of aluminum, particularly anything made of steel products has escalated dramatically. We have been following these trends very, very closely. Lumber, as you may be aware, maybe not, has come back down to a reasonable price. The mills have caught up, the supply has caught up to the demand and so that price has come down. Our biggest concern currently is anything that's made from steel and that could be metal step framing, could be rolled steel that they use for the outside shell of an HVAC unit. It could be our structural steel components, aluminum window frames, anything made with aluminum has gone up. Copper for wiring, those sorts of things. So what we're doing is following those trends. We'll be fully transparent with you so that you are able to make informed and educated decisions as we move forward with regard to budget. So the strategy we're employing to mitigate the budget issue is to keep moving forward with plans, get them through DSA, get that approval and watch these market trends. A good sign recently is that iron war has dropped forty percent in recent weeks. So that is certainly the material you're going to make the structural steel from. So you can see that may be a precursor to steel coming back down. Last week, the United States and the European Union dropped tariffs on steel, which we'll see how that translates into lower cost. More steel mills are coming online. So they're catching up with demand. The original problem with the steel demand was that when the pandemic hit, the steel mills panicked and they basically shut down too many mills. They shut down too much. And then when you had stimulus packages coming out, well, people got the stimulus. Well, what did they buy? They bought cars, they bought washers and dryers, refrigerators, things that used structural steel or rolled steel, flat steel, stainless steel, all those sorts of things. So they didn't realize that this demand was going to rebound so quickly. So they were a little bit caught off guard. And so where we are now is that catch up phase. So we're positioned very well in that experts say the price of steel products should drop back down to pretty close to a reasonable rate by Q two of next year. So March, April, May of next year. Somewhere in that timeline. Well, this is similar to the timeline where we're going to have DSA approval and be ready to go out to bid. So if the stars align, the price of these goods will drop right about the time we want to go out to bid. We'd like to go out to bid around the March timeline because you beat the summer rush of everyone bidding their summer projects like we do as well. We bid that early. And then as I've mentioned before, the passage rate of local bond measures on the last election cycle was in the thirty percentile. And that typically the local bond measures pass into eighty percentile range. And then the failure prop thirteen also kind of expands on the problem that contractors that are smart, they see that there's not. Um also kind of expands on the problem that contractors that are smart, they see that there's not as much schoolwork out in front of them. So now folks like block construction, and we talked at length today, are having a number of subcontractors reach out to them and say, hey, do you have any work coming up? Do you have any work coming up? Where in the past eight or ten years, there's been so much work that people didn't worry about it. So with that, we're getting more competitive subcontractor bids for labor. So that's my semi abbreviated version of where we are with budget. We want to keep you fully informed. There's school district here in the Bay that. Not fully informed and they end up in a newspaper and it's not something we want to do. We want to give you transparent, current, up to date information uh from which you can make decisions.
So it sounded like um you had said that right now. There may be some delays or there may be some um. Costs that we're going to incur that may not have been planned for due to the fact of the cost of steel. Or are you just referring to that we've purchased all the steel that we need for our current projects and for the NUSD Innovation Campus? That steel, um the cost of steel during that time when we get ready is one of the factors on deciding when we would actually start to break ground based on um. Conversations with uh our business services uh superintendent and the board.
Correct. So what we are going to do is follow that trend because if we went out to bid today, everything that's built with steel, aluminum, copper. Those prices are all way up. But so what we budgeted, we wouldn't meet that budget, wouldn't be anywhere near that budget. So it behooves us to just wait and see. What the trend is and we're and we're well positioned in that if we need to wait. A little longer after that until the market stabilizes, there you may see some impact from the infrastructure pass uh passage of the infrastructure package um in DC last week. And so we'll continue to watch those trends. I've read dozens and dozens of articles and from all sorts of sources, but yeah, that's it. Uh in in same thing as we did, we did almost the opposite at Mattos in that. We reached out to Wendy and said, hey, here's a situation where perhaps we should buy the steel early and we may realize some savings. And so we kind of checked for the steel on the Maddow's project. And I think it saved us probably seven figures by doing that. It was it was a big, big savings because right after that steel went through the roof. So we're really aware, we communicate well uh with the superintendent and CBO, allow them those decisions to be made so that we can. Um kind of navigate through these really unusual times.
That actually brings up an interesting point uh for DSA approvals. Is there like expiration date to the approval?
Typically, three years after approval. Yeah, you can get a one year extension, uh but we'll be hopefully all moved in and comfortable by then. Yeah. So the advantage to the. Totally, as you as you're aware, as you approve that that method of construction is that these are pre-approved buildings. So when they go to DSA, the time to get these approved is much, much less than it would be if it was a custom build. You know, the site work is always unique, but these buildings aren't structural members, the concrete, how it's all built. Only thing we change inside is we added more interior walls because we need more office space. So you know, not every room is nine hundred and sixty feet. So. You can customize it without changing it, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it does. And clarification on that, you said three years to complete the project?
No, three years. Uh DSA stamped the plans today. We'd have three years to complete the project. And if we didn't, then we could ask for a one year extension.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And and also I would like to uh just piggyback and I really want to appreciate Travis and for his dedication actually to look into this steel issue. That we we had this conversation a long time ago, as he mentioned, our approach is trying to be um proactive. And also we've been very mindful with our budget because we know this is all taxpayers' dollars. We want to spend them wisely. And for the Meadows, we pre-ordered the steel, so it saved us money. And in this case, basically, we want to wait, we want to wait for the steel market to cool down. So that way we can purchase the the steel with a reasonable price and within our budget. Basically, that's what we we're doing right now.
And if we have to wait even until the third quarter of the year, we could still be pretty much in line with our twenty twenty four target.
Be pretty close.
Travis, you you mentioned that uh contractors um this less projects, right, going on? And contractors are uh more competitive. Is that something we can take advantage of by? I don't know, get more getting more contractors to work on the project to kind of speed things up or perhaps lower our budget?
Yeah, and well, that's the advantage to the lease leaseback um that we are we do with block and what we did with XL is if this is an open book. And they uh come to you and they say, well, we had. Say, two years ago, you may have two or three electrical contractors come bid on a big job. I I would venture, I guess they're going to probably get ten contractors to do that. So they're going to have way more coverage than they would in the past. And so. We watch those things as well. So hopefully, our 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 wish is that the competitiveness of the actual labor market offsets what are either the natural increases in materials. Or these exorbitant amounts, you know, so we'll make that come down. Maybe it doesn't come all the way back down. Maybe it's partially offset by the lower labor cost. Because these contractors want to stay, uh they want to stay busy and they want to stay solvent. And if they lower their profit margin for a couple of years in the hopes that the state will pass a bond or another local bond measure here in this area will pass, they'll do that. And we've seen that and there's these trends. We built a high school in Merced, two hundred fifty thousand square foot high school for eighty million dollars. That that school today would be a hundred sixty million to build even in Merced. So we follow those trends very, very closely. Um kind of, some people have other hobbies, that's kind of mine. Hopefully, hopefully, I, you know, save you enough money to pay for my services.
We'll keep working on that one. Are there any other questions from the board?
I I I have reports on actual real report on progress of the projects, the other projects. I just wanted to piggyback from here. So if you want to see. Maddos and Spangler. We have a a quick drone video to show you of Maddos because it it shows, uh here we go. So Maddos building uh C right there that you see in building D, those are both classroom buildings are identical. This is building F, the multipurpose building. They have the stucco going on. You can see the overhang outside. Pretty cool, big building. Uh building E right there is another classroom building. And we'll go up in the air and take a look at Mill Peters. You can see the roof is going on building E. So C has drywall going in it. Um it's getting more further toward completion than D follows that, then E follows that. So there's a sequence of events. They will work their contractor one building to the next. You can see the Kinder Play area, staging area for the contractor, Carl's Junior. And then you'll see all this growth that the city has and the school is so well placed for this community. As we look up, you see your inner housing portables on the left. The city has started their construction of the park project. This is uh mostly a joint use project. Some of it's just city. There'll be a soccer field out there in the middle. See all that growth right there. There's beautiful Mill Peters. And the grass was just barely turning green, so you can get the best shot of it, but. Uh you can see that's a that's a great place to locate a school. And that's a basically what the end product will look like. We'll get the portables out of there. Uh resurface the play surface areas, couple of uh new playgrounds going in. So very exciting to see the progress and we're on track for an April completion date. And Block is doing a tremendous job on that. Of course, we meet every week. I'm out there all the time checking out the progress. Very clean and safe job site. Uh no major issues, should make it to the end uh with the appropriate contingencies we have in place. So very pleased with this. Then I have a slide presentation. So the so the Rancho Track project is complete. Go to the next slide. I think there's three of us. And you see the, there you go. Uh you see the long jump triple jump, uh six lane track. The D areas, they call it on the right side, is a big open area. There'll be a high jump competition there. On the left side D, you see a decomposed granite area, which is a shot put. Um beyond that, a little bit further east is a discus ring. Discus will be thrown out onto the grassy area. Um they're maintaining the grass until December third, at which time we can start using the track. Uh my understanding is some people are able to get through a fence and ride bikes and run around it are already doing so, but we're going to take a look at that, try to secure it off a little bit more. Um permanent safety, security fencing is into DSA right now. We should receive. Approval of that, hopefully this week or next week, we'll immediately get that out to bid. In the meantime, we're going to maintain the temporary fencing here. Reconfigure it, make sure it's a little more secure so that uh the site can use it, but we just won't be bombarded with community right out the gate till we can get that. That that permanent fencing. So that's that's coming as quickly as possible. We can do that work during the school year, so it's not like we have to wait till summer.
After six thirty.
Yes, sir.
After six thirty.
Six thirty? Oh, yeah, 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 seven oh three.
Seven oh three.
Um. This is the Russell track. Uh we started the Russell track a little further behind this. This contractor has fallen behind a little bit. We were doing everything we can to help mitigate that and get them finished. Uh they're a little further along now, but as you know, uh we had a. What do they call that? Trenchel downpour, uh Arctic River comes through here, atmospheric river. Um so that's how that's configured, kind of get an idea where we save the major softball field up to the top of that pitcher. Uh is where the other softball field is being reconstructed. So they're doing the backstop now and they'll they'll get that all complete. We're working with them uh to wrap this up as quickly as they can. Uh we do have to meet a certain temperature requirement, so the asphalt has to cure for twenty eight days. Prior to placing the rubber surfacing, uh just lets all the oils weep out of it and such. And then they'll power wash it and do the rubber, but we do have to meet a certain temperature requirement uh for that rubber to go on. So if it if it gets into January and it's really cold. We're going to postpone that rubber going on. And so uh we'll continue to work diligently as a good partner with this contractor to bring this project to completion. Uh next slide. Six lanes are both six lane. We kind of went back and forth on that and then we'll do on budget. We landed on six. As you recall, we initially started these as a lease leaseback project. We're really getting good subcontractor bids. We have great service from our lease leaseback contractor. We're getting the coverage. We decided to pull that, go to a low bidder. We saved uh. Over a million dollars, I think.
Yeah, I mean, seven hundred thousand for each side. So about, yeah, of one point four million for both sides.
So that that proved to be a good decision. One of those things, follow the market trend, make a decision based on that. Probably won't win them all, but we win most of them. Um next slide. I think that's the drone video. Oh, there it is. Okay. So this is building C on the inside. I just wanted to show you kind of the level of completion. You can see the drywall is going on. They're getting close to doing uh finishes and that sort of thing. Uh next slide. Uh so building D, so you can see they're just a phase behind all the framings and you're putting in the rough electrical, the rough HVAC, et cetera. Obviously, the next contractor in will be the drywall contractor. So they're just a couple of weeks behind each building. The next slide. And there's building D. It's just again, one step further behind that. And so they are doing a really good job with sequencing. You can see that it's a clean and safe site. Lock that site, you're not stumbling over things. Uh if there's rebar, it's capped or marked, so you don't poke. Uh I'm very impressed with the overall quality of work and safety on the site. Next slide. Spangler Elementary, which uh I I will say, uh Parwinder has been wonderful to work with. This project was a rush summer project. Um so a lot of challenges that come along with that. We knew that procurement of steel would be a challenge, uh which I'll speak to that more later. You can't really see close up on this, but that's the safety and security fence around some big gates in here. There's these big, long rocks and new landscaping and. Uh just a really cool space for people to congregate and really know this is the entrance to Spangler. This is how. Um how you get in and where it all happens. Next slide.
Uh Travis?
Yes.
On Spangler, uh when we did the walkthrough.
Yes.
There were some parts or sections of the gate that was not completed.
Yes.
Are these all completed now?
They're very close to completed. There were some issues. We were working out with the hardware, the panic door hardware and the locks. And so those have been worked out. And I think we're about ninety nine percent with those now. MOT wanted a particular. Configuration on certain things and that didn't get relayed appropriately through the design team. So we made those adjustments late. Um so what we have left, uh there's that, working on the staff bathroom. And that was a delay with going to DSA. They they it's interesting, we weren't even working in that building, but if you do certain repairs, then DSA requires you to. Nearest bathroom, make an upgrade. So we're doing that. Um and then in the new portables, there's six new portables. Um the configuration of the portables um was not ideal for the actual teachers in the standard, in the four standard classrooms or five standard classrooms. And so we're adding some casework in there. They they felt there wasn't enough storage. There was still money in the budget, and so we reached back out to the contractor. Those cabinets were supposed to go in on November first, but there's a procurement delay. I think the laminate is floating in Long Beach somewhere. And so we're still waiting on that. So we're trying to um get that, those cabinets in there as quickly as we can. The other thing that starts next week is the shade structure. So in which is technically a separate project, it's a separate DSA app, a separate contractor. Uh but there's a thirty by forty, a very large shade structure behind the new portables in a big blacktop area, which encourages and promotes the outdoor learning environment at the age of COVID. Um for social distancing and then you're not confined to a room, good ventilation, and then a smaller shade structure going in uh by the TK. Uh the TK playground. So those are onsite and sitting there waiting for installation. So we'll get those areas fenced off and saved off and get those built. Uh hopefully relatively quickly.
Oh, thank you.
Uh here you can see some of the landscaping in the new flagpole. Uh next slide. Your six new portables. Uh not real exciting because they look exactly like the last six portables, but they are brand new and they smell fresh and clean. Uh we had an issue with the carpet. Big thanks to Brian Shreve. He and I. Got carpet from Georgia to California in world record time, a little hiccup with our contractor, but we. We worked diligently to resolve that um and were able to move in all their items on top of carpet rather than a wood floor. Um next slide. Uh I just wanted to give you kind of an idea what the the district standard for security fencing would look like. It would look like this. This is an Ameristar product. Um we decided on the double top rail rather than little spiky things that looks like a juvenile hall. And so um this is the design we'll be using at every site. The idea is that if it's adjacent to a road or it's an area that's heavily trafficked. We would use fancy fence, playground, or you're wrapping it around a big giant tracker field, just the chain link for budgetary reasons. Next slide.
Want to go back to the last slide for a second?
Sure.
I think one of the things that's important for the community to recall is that when we did pass the bond, one of the issues uh in in addition to second high school campus. With safety and security across the district, there was some, there was some uh issues that were happening across the country in terms of student intruders and and. Adults not uh unauthorized people being on campus. And what will be the best way to do that? And one of the things that we did. Was there is a working relationship with the Milpitas Unified School District, excuse me, the Milpitas Police Department. In terms of their access time to campus and then some video work with them. And there was also securing the campus around our elementary schools. Whereas our our little ones are a little bit different in terms of their accessibility. And so that's why you're going to see these types of things go across the community. Because that's what they asked for at that time. So thank you for uh highlighting this work, uh because some folks might understand why. But the goal is to keep our community safe and secure, and that was one of the asks of the community.
Absolutely. And so we we are into DSA, speaking of the fencing as an overall, we're into DSA right now on Rancho and Russell, obviously, because we just built tracks there. We want to protect the investment. And Senate as well, because Senate is adjacent to Rancho. And if you're tricky enough, you can figure a way through Senate on the ranch. So those are in, I talked with LPA uh yesterday and we're we're going to select with the help of Brian Shreve, we're going to select the next three sites we want to design. And go to the next three, probably just pop them out three at a time, get them out to bid. Um other projects that occurred over the summer was roofing at Rancho, Rose and Senate. Those projects are done. Turned out great. Uh again, Mr. Shreve is very happy. These are uh roofs that were long overdue to be repaired or replaced. Uh some of them were the old gravel roofs, if you've ever seen those, kind of goofy, but we got those fixed up. And uh Mill Peters High School, lastly, Mill Peters High School Performing Arts Center. Second Gym Fitness Center has been into DSA for some time now. We got DSA San Diego. Uh which after the Maddos DSA review, it makes me very happy. Um I think we'll see, I think we'll get uh. Better service out of that particular office. We had a structural third party reviewer at Maddos that was difficult. And so um we're happy to be down in San Diego and I'll keep you posted on that. That's about the same timeline estimated for breaking ground would be in. You know, same issues with steel and all that, but you know, spring of twenty two. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, man. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, may I?
We're not questions, but I just want to say thank you for the presentation and all the updates on the school sites. Uh, with the. I. I guess I want to ask you about Matos. Um, when we visited Matos, it was very noisy and I asked you, I said, oh my God, the kids gonna go home with headaches. And you said that the classrooms are, if you close the door, somehow. Yeah.
Yeah.
But now the rainy season is here. Where do the kids play or recess?
I I think in the classroom, actually, and so, um, which may be similar to, you know, once we have the multipurpose done, then they'll have that as an option. But they didn't have that as an option prior. So, um, yeah, inside the regular classrooms, the the noise level drops quite a bit. Because of the insulated glass and low E and all the the title twenty four energy efficiency things that really kind of take that noise level down. Probably a little louder in the interim housing portables, but they're off to the side a little bit. And the bulk of the super noisy work is done where they're cutting the metal pan decking and slamming on it still. I think we saw some of that when we were out there.
Yeah.
I I will say that. This site has been tremendous. I mean, they they, uh, been on projects where you're doing actively working and. Teachers are throwing a fit every day. And I'm telling you, I think there's good leadership there. And I think that. Whatever the narrative is, it's being spoken at that school is working because everyone is full of joy. They're understanding. They're anxious to get their new facilities. And I don't get bombarded with. I don't like it. It's too noisy. It stinks. All these things that they, there's just, uh, it's just something about that campus. It was really just dialed in and. They're all on board with it.
Yes.
Yep, and I've been in the classrooms to observe and you don't hear the noise.
Yeah, I know. Um. I'm very, very happy. I'm excited that Milpitas is gonna be very beautiful. I just want to thank all the community members who helped pass the bond. Um, to make our city beautiful. So. Thank you, Travis.
Right.
Right.
I want to say, um, thank you Travis for your presentation. Um, hopefully we'll have a better future ahead and. Um, as always with the construction, safety first in all aspects. You know, whether that's like COVID or just general construction safety. I don't want anyone getting sick. I don't want anyone getting injured. So we can all go home healthy and happy. That's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you Travis.
Thank you.
Item C, learning and development update to marching band and NJROTC for physical education credit.
So I would like to have Executive Director Mary Jude Dorpinghouse introduce this.
Thank you. Um, I will be introducing Marissa Quade, uh, Director of Secondary Education and Frances Rose House, Principal. Of MHS, um, as they will be going through update on the, uh, request to come back on the marching band and the NJROTC. Uh, physical education credit. Um, also each of you has a flyer, uh, before Marissa and Frances come on board. And it's also been made available to the public, um, with updated information on this. And Scott, you will pull that up on screen.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jordan and Executive Cabinet. Um, you do have the handout in front of you. Thank you for getting that to them, Mary Jude. Um, it will guide the presentation that Principal Rojas and I will be giving around the possibility of assigning PE credit to alternative courses. Um, and in reviewing the CDE guidelines and education code, we have found that whether marching band and color guard. NJROTC or athletics may be awarded PE credit is the decision of the local governing board. Um, you may consider the following when making the decision, the course outline of the course. The visual and performing arts content standards and framework with relations, uh, relationship to the marching band and color guard. The PE model content standards and framework and the guidance from the superintendent of public instruction. Um, based on education code, we are required to offer a course of study in PE for high schoolers. Um, in eight instructional areas which are listed there. However, not every course for PE needs to be given credit, um, to include all eight areas. However, we are required to structure the course offerings to include, um, all of these areas, these eight areas. Um, over the course of the study. Um, in addition, based on education code, we do need to make sure that we are. Meeting minimum instructional minutes. Um, we are meeting the reporting requirements. Um, I'd like to also add that students are, um, passing the physical fitness test. And that we assign appropriately credentialed teachers. Um, Principal Rojas, Assistant Principal Drager and myself have met and. Principal Rojas is going to go over our proposed pathways to alternative PE credit for these possible courses.
Thank you, Marissa. Um, good evening, uh, Board and Executive, um, Cabinet. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, so, uh. We met and took a look at a couple of models, uh, from neighboring school districts that have already had this in place. Traditionally in their high schools and with, um, some feedback that we had received. Uh, when we first looked at this, I believe, two years ago, when Norman Rodriguez and I met with, uh, representatives of the MHS PE department. That the PE department really felt that physical education, um, has, does. Our physical education does a very good job in covering those eight standards, um, on the previous page. With that being said, um, our collaboration together, uh, between me, Marissa and Styler. Um, we landed that PE is important for all of our students to participate in. And so if you take a look at the proposed pathways to alternative PE credit, we see three, uh, pathways proposed here. Another alternative pathway is already in existence and that is for competitive sports, a waiver, um, that is already in place. But for marching band and color guard, NJROTC and athletics, all students will participate in ninth grade PE. Uh, and that allows us to cover, um, those eight standards, uh, through our physical education. Uh, pathways. So because everyone, uh, um, enrolled and successfully passes PE, uh, PE nine. Um, that covers those requirements as well as in PE nine, all students take the physical, uh, physical fitness test. And must pass that as well. So as you can see here for these, uh, various pathways. Um. You have to take PE nine the first year. And then when you move to the second year, that's when we will count, uh, your participation in. Uh, marching band and color guard or NJROTC or athletics as PE credit. Um, and then the rest of the years follow after that. Uh, this does not prevent students from enrolling in PE as an elective if they want. However, for the students in these programs like marching band and color guard and NJROTC, many students want to commit to a four year. Um, commitment to those programs and it does take away your opportunities for electives. Um, so if you scroll down to benefits to consider. Uh, these are some benefits, uh, to consider, uh, improving these pathways. Uh, number one, our PE department has asked for, um, year after year for lower class sizes. And this will definitely lower PE class sizes to more optimal levels for student teacher interaction and learning. From forty five students, potentially thirty five students. It also opens up opportunities for eleventh and twelfth graders who want to take PE as an additional elective. Currently, we turn away eleventh and twelfth graders because there's not enough space for them to be in PE. So ninth and tenth graders can receive their requirements. Um, as we've also heard at board meetings, uh, in the past, uh, around NJROTC recruitment. This will also promote recruitment for marching band and color guard as well as NJROTC. As well as promote commitment for a four year participation by students in those programs. Also for those students in those programs, uh, it'll open up their schedule, um, including our athletes, our student athletes to take another required course. Other required courses such as world languages, arts, and advanced academic courses. Many of these students have to choose between staying in their program or taking these courses or. Sometimes having to confirmally enroll in colleges to take these courses. And finally, this increases the opportunity for students in the CTE academies and avid electives, um, to participate. In programs like band, NJROTC and athletics, because it opens up a period, um, especially during their tenth grade year. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for the update.
Not a comment, but public comment. We want to turn to public comment before we deliberate.
Uh, yeah, we do have a virtual hand raised. Uh, we will go to Rita Lou. We are gonna enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. Uh, just please take yourself off mute or right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine.
I just wanted to get some clarification on the chart that you have there. Uh, it says for tenth grade that marching band and color guard will count as one year of PE. Uh, is that, um, accurate, one year or is it half a year of PE? Just wanted to clarify.
Um, am I allowed to answer that?
Yes, you are.
Uh, so yes, in our discussion, we wanted to count that as one year of PE because in the ninth grade. They also spent one year in marching band color guard. So. As they're receiving their PE cred through PE, that first year, they did spend half a year. In marching band and color guard and in in tenth grade, the first half of that year, again in marching band and color guard. And we want to give them the PE credit for a full year at that tenth grade. So in order to, uh, receive the year of credit, you have to be enrolled in marching band color guard. In your first year at Milpitas. And same thing with NJROTC.
Okay, um, and then I had a second question. Uh, is this retroactive?
Um, I think that would have to be something we explore. We did not discuss that at this point.
Okay.
But I can, I can see it as if you're a senior next year and you have taken PE nine in the past. Then we can count, um, probably your senior year, if you still need the PE requirement. We can give the one year. That's all that if this is approved by the board and approved by the CPC for implementation in the twenty twenty two twenty school year.
And CPC is Curriculum Policy Council.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, we have a couple more hands raised. Uh, Paula Huss, we are gonna. Enable your audio. You'll take yourself off mute and you'll have two minutes to speak. Go right ahead. Paula, you're unmuted, but we're not able to hear you. Now you're muted. There, let's see. Oh, cook it one more time. Paula, you're still muted?
Okay, there we go.
Yes, there you go.
Uh, I'm actually Paula's daughter. My name is Gina Huss. Uh, I'm a senior this year and I have been in marching band all four years. I was at the meeting two weeks ago. I actually brought my drums in. Um, I was just wondering if, because I am taking PE this year. Um, because I still needed to fulfill the requirement. Um, would I be able to, uh. Will this be like in act, in effect early enough for me to not take PE next semester? Um, or not? I guess that's my question.
I'm sorry, Gina. Unfortunately not. Um, this will take, um, the rest of next semester that approved for implementation the following school year. So please continue to take PE.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this is Gina's mom and we're thankful that it's gonna be considered for the future.
You're welcome.
And that was the last virtual hand raised.
So, um. Okay, are there any additional comments from the board?
I'm looking to the board members who have high school students for your comments.
Um, I'll start, uh. I I appreciate what the team put together in terms of pathways to PE credit. Um, it wasn't, you know, this is why we can't do it. It was, this is what we can do. Based on the research, uh, what other school districts are doing. Um, the benefits in terms of what it offers to our seniors. I've also seen, uh, high schools that now that they have these programs, pathways to PE credits. I've seen that some of the sports, um, students take the elective of PE at the end of the day. And they have a chance to, um, learn more about their sports. Uh, that they're involved in because there's only so many, there's only so many hours that they can actually practice. But if they had a class that they could go to and learn more about their sports, I've seen. High schools that have these types of programs offer also have a PE elective that's, uh, available for people that are playing on sports teams. That is also helpful as well, and this clearly opens up the door, uh, for that. So it's very encouraging on on multiple fronts. That they have discovered a reasonable pathway for both NJROTC and marching band and athletics to be recognized. Um, and get the physical education requirement that's in, that we are required to provide by Ed Code.
Yeah, I want to thank, um, Francis for putting this together. Um. You know, it is not only about, you know, showing what the benefits are for the the students, but here lowers PE class sizes. You know, um, alleviating, um, overcrowding, I don't know, um, too many students in the PE class. Um, opening pathways and doors and opportunities for our students. Um, you know, for my. Daughter, I mean, it doesn't impact her because she kind of likes PE and she's in cross country and. This is her second year in PE. So, I mean, it's just, I I think it's a wonderful opportunity, uh, for both sides. So, um, I like the idea. That's my opinion.
Oh, I just want to say, um, thank you for the report and. Um, you know, we we see it all around us. I I see it all the time that, you know, students are under a lot of stress and pressures right now. So I think now is a good time as any, probably. You know, the the best time ever to, um, work to help students reduce the stress. Um, in reasonable ways. Because, you know, people are under a lot of stress right now and sometimes it does. Contribute to tragic events. So I, I really think it's it's time for things to change. And as long as some, something is reasonable, and I don't believe there's, there's gonna be any harm involved. Uh, we should do it. And that's really the the spirit of community that. Should be, should be upheld. In in this district and in the city, uh, whenever reasonable accommodations can be made, they should be made.
Thank you. We are now on to item seventeen, action items. Time for public comment will come after each staff presentation. Discussion after motions are for board members to deliberate. We have item seventeen A, select from candidates. For the County Committee on School District Organization Superintendent's Office. What we have is Board Member Minno is the district representative for the Senate Clerk County Committee on School District Organization. Each school district should have their own. Should have the representative select the candidate of choice. If no representative selected, the board president may complete the ballot. District boards also have the option on voting for a candidate as a collective board action. So I have to provide any additional background on that.
Did you say that trustee No is our representative to cast the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
From that standpoint, you know, the, as always, as a board, um, if you would like to recommend anyone from the list. Uh, I'm certainly willing to hear it. We can, as it states, vote a, vote as a collective board. Or you can uh allow me to continue to place our district vote.
Okay, that is an item four. Okay, we, we have an understanding. Um, is there any public comment on this item?
Uh, no virtuals hands raised at this time.
Okay, is there, um, is there a motion to um. Allow Board Member No to be the District Representative and cast the vote. For the select candidate of choice.
Yes, I motion uh according to the recommendation.
We have a motion according to the recommendation. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing there is no additional discussion on the selection of the candidate, all those in favor. I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Seeing none, men within good hands. Item seventeen. Number two, adopt resolution twenty-two dot twenty-one, recognizing November as Seek American Awareness and Appreciation Month Superintendent's Office.
So we have uh with us Principal Joel. And she has worked on the seeks resolution and principal, since you're with us today, would you like to introduce it?
All right, thanks again for inviting me the second time. Uh, with this resolution which we wrote last year. We actually have about four or six students as Spangler. So they were very, um, they were not aware of this. Uh, so it was a very exciting opportunity for them. For them to, for me to go through with them and they were willing to uh read it in a video, so Scott will play the video.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, hello, my name is Ranger.
And my name is Anubel.
And this is the resolution twenty-two point twenty-one. Recognizing and honoring November as California Sick American Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas six who originated in Punjab, India have been living in the United States for more than one hundred twenty years. First entered California through the Angel Island Immigration Station in San Francisco and.
Whereas the first prime years arrived in the US and worked in railroad lumber or agriculture jobs. Including a hundred employees by Western Railways, Railways in Northern California. Where they helped complete a seven hundred mile stretch of track between Oakland and Salt Lake City and.
Whereas there are believed to be about five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand six in the United States. Roughly half of them in California and twenty-seven million worldwide and.
Whereas sick Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions. To the cultural and economic vibrancy of California, sick Americans have served. As members of Congress, mayors, judges, city council members, soldiers and scientists. And the first American Asian elected to Congress was a sick named Dalip Singh. From the twenty-ninth California, the largest P, Aqua and Asian farms are all owned by sick farmers. In California and.
Whereas the word sick means seeker of truth. Sikhism was found five hundred years ago when a man named Nannick walked the South Asian continent, teaching all that. Teaching that all paths lead to one God. All people are equal and, and each of us can experience freedom through loving and serving others and.
Whereas sick values are American values, sick community fostered love, equality and acceptance alike. America's sick stance against injustice and inequality wherever it exists.
Now therefore be resolved that United or Milpitas Unified School District hereby proclaim, proclaim. The month of November twenty-twenty-one as California Sick American Awareness and Appreciation Month. And encourages all educators to commemorate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs. Thank you for coming.
Are there any, uh, oh. Are there any comments from the public?
Oh, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to accept the resolution.
I'd like to speak.
So what we're, we're gonna do is we're gonna do a motion and then there's a second. And then at that time, additional discussion by the board before we place the vote. So, so we have a motion and we have a second.
So now I can speak.
Okay, um, well, you know, this, this again brings back some memories. Um, and some thoughts to my mind, I know they. And there's just, just so much rich history in, in the Sikh tradition and the teachings. And I think we really have, have to think back on them as, as a resource in these difficult times. Um, I know the Sikh American community has been through a lot of suffering. You know, I, I think of the, the, the tragedy of the. The mass shooting and, you know, what, what's, one thing that stood out is just that. Um, you know, all Sikh Americans only make up, you know, a relative minority of the demographic. Yet some of these vic, the victims of violence were very disproportionately Sikh Americans. And sometimes, you know, I, I just have to wonder, right? Like, you know, violence is always bad, but. You know, how, how come it seems like some communities are disproportionately being victimized by it? And I remember.
I'm, I'm on a timer.
Um, and, and yeah, you know, we, I hate to say it, but in, in this world, evil exists. Um, corruption exists and, and in our time, just as in the ancient times of the Sikh leaders. They, they were persecuted by people who abused their power to attack and harm others. So we have to remember that and stand strong against um evil. So, you know, I think this is real important. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Um, thank you for the history lesson. I think from a Sikh community perspective, I appreciate all the communicate uh contributions that they provided here in this community. Uh, they are integral part. Um, we see their students here being leaders and I really appreciate uh Principal Dharari. Uh, for bringing the students to read the resolution. It was really touching. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion. All those in favor? I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item number three, revised board by law ninety-three twenty-three, meeting conducts Superintendent's Office.
So. At our board superintendent retreat, thank you very much, Principal Joel and Assistant Principal. Uh, Flores for being here tonight. So at our superintendent board retreat on October ninth, the board talked about. Public comments and also the process for. The procedures at board meetings when we had our legal counsel with us. Mister Matthew Turnick from DWK. And in addition to talking about the Brown Act and social media conduct, he also talked about. About how we can assure that the board's meeting is one that is orderly and conducted effectively. And so the discussion led to adding some pieces of information on. The board uh conduct of meetings so that for the board and the public and future boards. They would know that there are some ways that we can approach public comments. When there are large numbers of people here to speak to the board on the same topic. And so those items are shared there in the summary agenda that the board wanted to add to the bylaw. For example, rather than waiting and calling one person up at a time. The board may call five people up at a time so that there is efficient time in between speakers. Rather than waiting for them to go back and forth from their seats. The other is that when there are ten or more speakers to talk on the same topic. That they come up as a group and that the leader speak and that by presence of those standing behind them. The board then knows the um impact that the item has on people. And then the third is that for those large groups of people who want to come and speak on a certain item or to express. Since um a sentiment during public comment that those. Who have something to add to what has already been said, speak, but otherwise the rest, their mere presence with those who are speaking. Is powerful enough and also provides an opportunity for the board to continue with its meeting. In an effective and efficient orderly manner.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Um, hold on one second. Uh, is there any public comments, Scott?
Give me a sec. There was a hand raised, but now there's not. Uh, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, and we will accept uh men's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. With the slight sneeze, or is there any additional discussion?
Um, yes, I do want to state uh for the record that I strongly believe and fight for the right of public access. And public comment. Uh, I believe everyone who shows up to speak should have a right to speak and not be given. Or everyone should be given the same amount of time and the same opportunity to speak regardless. Of the content of their message. Um, I think no one should be discriminated against with their speaking opportunities. Because maybe someone doesn't want to hear what they have to say. So I think it's real important that um. Uh, no, nothing happens to limit or suppress public comment. And that's my position.
Is there any additional discussion?
No, I think the bullet points here really outline the opportunity for folks to come up and add anything in addition. To what is being said, I appreciate Superintendent Jordan for really laying out. Uh, the fact that we were trying to conduct an orderly meeting, um, while allowing folks in the public to really express their opinions. In an orderly fashion.
And also to provide additional context during the discussion. Uh, it was pointed out that there are times when there may be literally a hundred people to speak to the board on the same topic. And so this is a way to help move the proceedings along effectively.
Well, the thing is, there, there.
So, so we're in, so we ask for additional discussion relative to the point of. Getting to the, getting to a, a motion at this item. So I appreciate each uh member of cabinet as well as the board uh providing their comments. Um, I would like to provide the opportunity for um for Clerk Leanne. For Vice President Yip Tron or myself to be able to participate in this conversation as well, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
I'd like what this is on the.
Where's your microphone?
This on.
Okay.
I said I'd like what is proposed here, so I have no other comments.
Yeah, no, I, I really like, it's outlined here, streamlines the process, creates efficiency, and that's what we strive for.
Thank you. This time, um, with the discussion held by the board, each providing their, providing their perspective. Um, we have a motion and a second, so I have no additional comment at this time. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have, um, we have four and we have one opposed. Thank you. Item four. Approved Board Clerk Leanne and Board Member No's selection for the Community Board Advisory Committee. For Clerk Leanne, Board Member No were appointed to the subcommittee to review four applications and select three candidates for the Community Board Advisory Committee. The four applicants are Anita Butler, Decide, Dewal, Lupe. Ruba Kalba and Thomas Valore. Board Clerk Leanne and Board Member No met Friday, November fifth to review the applications and will share their three recommendations for C-BAC.
Well, um, we're uh Clerk Leanne and I met on Friday and as we reviewed the applications. Um, of the four, we noticed that uh Lupe was already a representative of Rose Elementary. And looking at the other three uh community members that wanted to be a part of the, the C-BAC. Uh, we're pushing for Anita Butler, Decide, Dewal and Thomas Malory for the board to review and.
Okay, Scott, is there any public comment?
Uh, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any additional discussion from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor? I.
Hi.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay. Uh, the vote of four to one, motion carries. Consent items, consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff or public request that specific item be tabled. Or removed for discussion or correction. Is there, is there any public comment?
Uh, we have no virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion?
Uh, I would like to remove or to table the. Item eighteen D one.
Okay. You asked for the item to be tabled? Okay. Are there any other items for any other board members?
No.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Motion, consent items except for eighteen D one.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? No additional discussion. All those in favor? I, any opposed? We have item uh D one that has been tabled.
Tabled, pulled, pulled.
Pulled. Where did I get tabled? Oh, because you said table. Okay, pulled. Okay, we have four discussion.
Uh, Mr. Forster, would you please put, project it so we could see the minutes from October twenty-sixth?
Um, down to page six. Uh, item six. Right there, right there, right there. Okay. Just want to correct. This item. For. When Michael side motion, I said. This one, the reports to reflect that. We do have members. Always pay attention word by word, so I want that to reflect the change.
Of course. Are you sure? Because I remember that, uh. Or Vice President Yip Chuan said, if you motion, I would second.
Yeah, and then she jumped in and she seconded.
Oh, okay.
No, I believe, Scott, do, do you have the video from that meeting? Can we replay it to see what happened exactly? Because, uh, sometimes I'm, I'm concerned about history being rewritten. Do, do you have the video from that so we can replay it?
I'm not going to waste the community's time. If you would like to watch the video, watch it on your own camera.
No, I'm sorry. So.
So even no one in the room. Order, order please. Thank you. So, um, based on the fact that we have, uh, a request for an item to be pulled. And the reason why we're asking for that item to be pulled is for the record, uh, to be corrected. The, is this a mandatory item that we approved tonight? Or can the cabinet, couldn't someone go back, look, confirm who did it and then update it for the next, uh, consent items?
Yep. So we can bring it back on November twenty-third and Scott will review the video.
Uh, sounds good. Yeah, I, I'll definitely review the video and it is on our website as we, uh, kind of navigated before, right?
Absolutely. Okay. So we have this item over.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, I don't appreciate those remarks about wasting the community's time. Um, when, especially when you were the one who wanted to pull this item and discuss it in the first place.
So we're not going to do that. We're, we're not going to do that. Um, with that said, we have action on the item that has been pulled D one. Um, and we are on now to item nineteen. And that's the dates of future board meetings. November twenty-third, we have a tentative study session at five PM. We have a tentative closed session at six PM. We have ocean, open session at seven PM. And we had to hybrid on Zoom, YouTube and in the boardroom at thirteen thirty-one East Calabasas Boulevard. Building five hundred. And then we also have December fourteen, tentative study session, five PM, tentative closed session, six PM. Open session, seven PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube and board meeting. And we may, uh, just keep your, uh, calendar somewhat free because we may have to have. A special board meeting based on the results that come back regarding, um, the, uh, the health and wellbeing of staff based on the survey. Okay, announcements and reminders.
Do we still have time to talk about Jack and Mike?
Yeah, we were gonna. So, um.
We do want to table it.
We do have a board meeting on the twenty-third. Believe that may give us ample time to, um, have a discussion on it or we can talk about it now. What, what would you prefer?
In the interest of time, I would, uh, postpone it.
How, how long do you want to talk about it for? I got a few minutes. But if you want to postpone it.
So we, we, so we have one board member who says they would like to, um, postpone. We have one board member says that they're available to talk about it now. You have any comments from the other board members at this time?
That's that. Let's go.
Okay, we have other, we have, um, two other additional board members who would wish to postpone the matter. So superintendent, can we bring that? Uh, back toward the next board meeting?
Yes, and as an announcement, the Jack Emery Drive ends on Wednesday, December fifteenth.
So the Jack Emery Drive ends on Wednesday, December fifteen. Okay. Um, we are, at this time, we are, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none.